Good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's regular commission meeting Monday, May 12, 2025. It is 9:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Behill.
Present.
Commissioner Romero.
Present.
Commissioner Rush. Vice Chair Romero.
Present.
Chair Mascheranes.
Present. Moving right along to item number three, we will have inspirational devotion by Commissioner Romero.
God bless this meeting of the Taos County Commission. May we reflect on our obligations and may we remember our actions through the example of the good, the wise, and the just.
Thank you. Moving right along, would everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance? Gentlemen, please remove your hats.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the Zia symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. Moving along to item number six, approval of the agenda. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve, chair.
Motion to approve the agenda by Commissioner Behill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Behill.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Chair Mascheranes.
Yes. Thank you. Moving along to the next item, awards and recognition. Years of service certificate for the months of April 2025 presented to Mr. Hara Mio.
Chair Mascheranes, I don't see Deputy Gonzalez here. He's wanted, we wanted to recognize him for his five years of service with Taos County, so I guess he was not able to make it, but if you guys see him, just acknowledge him for his service to Taos County.
Thank you. Appreciate it that. Moving on to item B, new hires for the month of April 2025. Randy, HR.
Good morning. So my name is Randy Swazo. I'm the Human Resources Supervisor. I don't think I've introduced you guys to Gabriela Castillo. I don't know if she has been here, but she's going to present the April new hires for 2025.
Awesome. Welcome, Gabriela.
Thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to welcome Joseph Rassikot. He's our new permit technician. We have Erin Rendon, our firefighter and EMT. Donovan Byers, our deputy sheriff. Elizabeth Roberts, our quester site cook. Stacy Trujillo, our DWI screener and monitor. We have Joshua Johnson, Francisco Ribera, Nathan Freely for the ABC cadet positions, and Jasmine Struck for the deputy treasurer one position. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies. Appreciate it. Moving along to item C, presentation of certificates to the Taos High School Cheerleaders. Welcome all of you.
Mr. Chair, it's one of my honors to recognize the Taos High School Cheerleaders for their accomplishments of winning state once again. So I'm going to get a little help with this. Melissa Ortega, who also assists the cheerleaders, is going to assist us this morning. She's going to call out the names and I'll add the certificates. And once your name's called, if you can, I'll stand up here and we'll take a group picture when everybody's up here.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen. Okay, so the certificate reads, "The Taos County Board of Commissioners proudly represent, present," let me start again, "Taos County Board of Commissioners proudly presents this certificate of accomplishment to Alexis Setzel, demonstrating and conducting continued commitment required to achieve excellence and success. Congratulations on winning 2025 state championship chair 4A." Eileen Cardenas. Amadea Gallegos. Amista Garcia. Beatrice Cassidy. Japhrey Vivas. Monique Jordan. Vanessa Herrera. Braylen Quintana. Cameron Ortiz. Faith Lobato. Jaylene Swazo. Tamaya Rayal. Alessandra Garcia. Alissa Costa. Andrea Romero. Candace Stroback. Danielle Burke. Stella Trujillo. Tilia Rodriguez. Emiliana Khan. Jada Romero. Mariah Brown. Miguel Fernal. Gwendolyn Whitney. Haley Austin. Serenity Behill. Teah Rose. Treasurer Macy. Beatrice Cassidy. And coaches, we have Lisa Beto Valerio. Diane Axo. Alessia Ortega. Mariah Martinez. And Tilia Rodriguez.
Did you want to say anything, Lisa?
I just want to thank you guys for honoring the girls. They work really, really hard. And Miguel, I always have to say the girls and Miguel. And it really is an honor to be able to represent Taos and continue working hard. Our goal is to be back again next year.
Parents, you could stand up if you want to take a picture, get close. Two rows.
Where's the center? Again, he said, are we center? Sure. Down low. Sorry. I can get a little down. There you go. We don't have.
Look at the same place.
Oh, look at him. He's got the short one in the middle. Why do you have to say short? Why are you? Not short. No, you're not. You're my size. Okay, got it.
Ready, good?
Yes. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen and coaches for coming today. Okay, moving along to item eight, public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak shall limit their comments to three minutes and no action may be taken. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? See none? None. Is there anybody on the other end? None? Okay. Okay. Moving on to item nine, A, approval of the April 15, 2025 special meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman motion to approve the minutes of the April 15 special meeting.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Romero. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Behill. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Behill.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Chair Mascheranes.
Yes. Item B, approval of the April 15, 2025 regular meeting minutes. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve the April 15, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Behill. I'll go ahead and second that. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Behill.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Chair Mascheranes.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to item 10, presentations. A presentation from the Main Street, Charles Whitson, executive director, Arsenio Trujillo, and Jesse Hook. Welcome, everyone, whoever's here.
Good morning.
Morning.
First off, Chairman Mascheranes, commissioners, county staff, thank you for allowing us to be here this morning for this presentation. A few items before, before we get started with the, with the slides. All right. So as, as you stated, my name is Charles Whitson. I'm the executive director for Taos Main Street. With me today, I have Arsenio Trujillo and Jesse Hook. I will let them introduce themselves a little bit further in, in their sections of the presentation. I did want to formally acknowledge one of our Taos Main Street board members. We have Cheryl Ann Atcity with us. She is the, the owner of Atcity's on Taos Plaza and is a longstanding board member for Taos Main Street. So we, we thank her for all the time and effort that she's, she's put in and volunteered for the organization. I'd like to ask the commission, we've structured this presentation in three different sections, and I thought maybe after each section, we could take a brief pause for questions and comments, if that's preferable. And then at the end, we would have, we'd have more time to address any, any outstanding questions and comments, if that's okay with the commission. Perfect. So I think with that being said, let's go ahead and, and jump, jump in here. So next slide, please. So I want to start, start with the vision. This is something that we always aspire to. We believe that the Plaza District is for everyone. It is a safe, walkable, and bikeable place with a strong, diverse economy and thriving businesses. It features vibrant and inviting public spaces where residents and visitors feel like they belong. At the core of our approach to revitalization is a commitment to creating places of shared prosperity, equal access to opportunity, and sustained inclusive engagement. Next slide, please. So we're going to talk a bit about each strategy, and then I'm going to, each, and each strategy is going to have a section where we really are honing in on, on some projects and activities we, we're conducting to advance that strategy. So strategy one, simply an inclusive, vibrant civic space. So the historic Plaza District is for everyone. How do we reinvigorate the Plaza District for residents of all ages? Next slide, please. Well, we, we start by lining up, lining out some key priorities here. So first priority, we have inclusivity and belonging. So we want to design, design and program the space to be welcoming to all with special consideration for families with children, youth, and seniors aging in place. Second priority is activation. So activations can be events, activities, anything that really draws people in and activates all of those, those civic spaces we have downtown. So we want to make sure that we celebrate local identity through events, activities, arts, storytelling, and anything that really reflects our, our cultures and values. We want a safe and accessible design. So we really want to improve the comfort, safety, and access for all users and all visitors downtown. We want that, we want our spaces to be ADA friendly, shaded, lots of seating, and we really just want it to feel inviting for, for everyone. And then finally, community partnerships. Really, to do all of this requires a lot of community level partnerships. So we really want to start collaborating with schools, senior centers, cultural organizations, and anyone that can help us ensure that, that programming downtown really reflects our communities' needs. Next slide, please. So why is this important? A truly inclusive Plaza District is, is more than just a gathering place. It's really a symbol of who we are. So as everyone starts to see themselves reflected in our downtown and in those spaces, the more civic pride grows, the more community intends to engage with those spaces, and as a result, we think the, the economies will grow as well. Next slide, please. So how are we advancing this, this strategy and some of its key priorities? Next slide. We, I want to talk about two, two different projects and activities today. So one of them is the Plaza infrastructure improvement, improvements. This really is, I think, lining up to be, to be a really strong collaborative partnership. We have Taos Main Street, who secured a million dollars of capital outlay funding from the state. We have the town of Taos, who conducted the first phase of the Plaza improvements to fix the underlying infrastructure. And then we have Taos County, who's, who's going to take on the second phase of, of the Plaza improvements. And really, you know, the, the impact of a project like this, you know, we, we kind of have a little, a little flow chart here with a safe and accessible design. We will see increased cultural and civic activation, so more activities, more events happening on the Plaza. This will increase the community's sense of inclusivity and belonging there on the Plaza, and that will yield more and stronger community partnerships for, for, and, and these things just kind of happen in a cycle. So the community partnerships just flow right back into more activations, more, stronger sense of inclusivity and belong. Next slide, please. Now I want to bring up Arsenio to talk about a new activity for the Plaza. So Arsenio has, has recently joined Taos Main Street as our newest team member. We're thrilled to have him here, and I'd like to go ahead and let him come up and, and talk to you all about, about this new activity for the summer.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of this Taos County Board, all staff members of Taos County, and all guests here this morning. It's an honor to present to you this morning, and it's good to see you all. And thanks for having me, allowing me the time and consideration to, to introduce a new activity that we got coming up here at the Taos Plaza, the whole downtown, as a matter of fact. So if we could show the slides, please. My name, of course, is Arsenio J. Trujillo, and one of my main jobs is to, is to get more people to the Plaza on a regular basis and have them come down and enjoy all the amenities and all the, the great things that we have in our downtown historic districts. So one of the, the activities that we're going to be starting here, as a matter of fact, a week from today, is called Meet Me at McCarthy's. It is a, basically just a fitness program that we're trying to instill and get people to come on out and, and join us for those wonderful evenings that we have here in Taos, to get out and do some, some act, semi-impactful activity and get them to, you know, maybe walk, jog, run, and explore the, the downtown districts. And so, like I said, slated to begin in, in one week, on May 19th, we're hoping to have 20 full sessions throughout the summer so that people can depend on a regular activity every Monday night at the Plaza. And, you know, the, the starting point will be at the McCarthy's Plaza, and that's why we have the name Meet Me at McCarthy's. It is designed to create an environment of belonging for everyone, as was mentioned in the, the key priorities in the previous slides. We want to really make sure that the, the Plaza District, the downtown district is welcoming and inviting to everybody of all ages. We want them to come back and, and just by having them there, I think is going to reinvigorate that, that sense of spirit that we're, we're seeking. Next slide, please. So we've got four objectives with Meet McCarthy's. The first objective, of course, is to encourage all individuals with an interest in participating in low to medium impact activities. And so the idea is that maybe we can get people to come out, do their steps, and studies show that people work better in groups. They're motivated by groups, they're motivated by their friends, their families, their, their, you know, their loved ones that help them kind of achieve their fitness goals. And so this is, this is a fitness program, but it's not, they're not obligated to do any of the things that we're asking them to do. So there's going to be a couple of variations on what, what folks can do, but more importantly, bringing them downtown and, and even having them do a couple of laps around the Plaza is, is the idea. We're not intending to shut down the Plaza, but we're not intending to stop traffic or do anything like that. Just if you go to the Plaza on any given night, you'll see a lot of really nice evenings, as I mentioned, but a lot of tourists from out of town are the ones that are kind of scouring the area, and they're, I think it's, it would be really nice for our locals to have the chance to do that as well on a regular basis. So that objective one is just to have them kind of come out and do some, some physical fitness with us. Number two is to provide a healthy, safe, and fun pastime. And so with the new roads that are, I mean, the new construction that we have on the Main Street, we've already seen that there's some, safe, there's going to be safe crossings, there's going to be nice wide sidewalks, and, and once again, we're going to involve a lot of different entities to help us to make sure that it's safe and to make sure that people are having a fun time. And that's what I keep hearing over and over and over again, is that we want to have something fun for folks to, to enjoy. So next slide, please. And the third objective is to also create connections with our peers. The cheerleaders that were in here, they're invited. They're kind of an inspiration for this. We, I used to drive buses early in the morning, and I would drive really early in the morning and on my way to work, and I'd see the cheerleaders running throughout the downtown streets, and they had everybody be in the morning. And so we want them to come out and, and with that, more sports teams to come and, and enjoy also the, the amenities that are downtown and, and get them to feel like they're welcome and that they have a little bit of ownership. So we want all ages to come out and join us. So that's what objective three is about, is just to make sure that we have something very consistent for everybody to, to count on on a week, week basis. And then objective four is those lasting partnerships with the merchants downtown, making sure that the merchants are included in, in, you know, our thought process and, and maybe giving them an, an opportunity to change their, their business model. I mean, Mondays are generally pretty slow. I've heard that tourists want an excuse just to stay an extra day, so if this becomes a thing, maybe we could, you know, tout it as such, and then, you know, get, you know, get some business for our, for our local merchants downtown who, you know, might be yearning for an extra day of, of, of hearty business. Next slide, please. And then, of course, I'm here to invite you all too to come out. So it says, in there, it says, county, city leaders, and of course, so Taos Publo Athletics is a, is a, is a partner in all this. So the leadership at Taos Publo is also, has been invited, and they might even come out and do some regular things with us as well to, to ensure that we have a, some really great partnerships with all, all those individual government entities in Taos County. Is there any, are there any questions?
I have a question. Is this going to begin at a certain time? Or, you know, what does that look like in regards to?
Yes, Commissioner. Thanks for your question. Yeah, it'll be five o'clock is, is generally the time. Two hours in the evening, we'll have, we're, we're, we're trying to see if we can get some live music out there and, and kind of, once again, just, just try to motivate people to get out and do their steps, and dogs are welcome. It would be really nice to see carloads of families show up and, and come and do this together. And five o'clock is when it starts. We are going to have a, a special send-off. We have a, a local that's going to be kind of our pole position person that's going to start this whole thing next week. And then we should wrap up by about seven o'clock, but it's well before time, you know, before it starts getting dark in the evening. But people can stay as long as they want. But people can stay as long as they want, and hopefully, they stay and grab a bite to eat downtown and maybe do some shopping.
Yeah, and Chair, if I may continue by saying that your daughter, Aurora, has been talking to us, so I think she's getting people to, she's getting us ready. Let me just say that, she's getting us ready, so I hope to be there.
Correct, thank you, Commissioner. Yes, it's a group effort, and, you know, thanks to Taos Main Street, and they're helping us to kind of, basically, it's coming to fruition because of all the different organizations and different individuals that are really excited about this.
Yeah, Arsenio, my question is about the merchants. How involved are the merchants in your process? It appears to me that most of the businesses are kind of geared more towards the tourism trade than locals, and so, I guess my question is, have you engaged with them to see if they might change their business model, or how is that? Go on.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner, I have. I've attended the roundtable meetings that occur on a regular basis, the Wednesday, that's Ruth Ann McCarthy and others that are kind of really concerned about the going-ons of the downtown area. So, I've, we've presented before them, and we've gotten a really good response from them. We've also engaged with some of the other merchant groups that are meeting on a regular basis. So, we've made presentations to them, and I think it's probably one of those, let's wait and see what's going to happen before we do anything, but hopefully, like, we can demonstrate dozens, if not hundreds, of, you know, folks providing foot traffic in the downtown area, that they might be able to see that with their own eyes and then decide to make those business decisions on their own. Yes. Thank you.
Anyone else?
See, no, thank you, Mr. Trujillo, I appreciate the information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate the time and consideration.
Thank you, thank you, Arsenio. Just a couple, a couple comments before we jump into the next section. To Commissioner Romero's point, one of the challenges that we have is that... All right. One of the challenges that I think our downtown has faced for some time now is that, yes, it has been primarily focused on tourists and tourism, which creates a little bit of a chicken-and-egg scenario. So, you know, it's hard to recruit a bunch of businesses to come downtown that are going to be focused on serving resident demand if there's not a bunch of resident demand present downtown. So, with a type of sustained activity like this, and really, the reason behind this is not doing a one-off event, one-off events are great, but when you have sustained activity and you start creating the feeling that there's always something happening downtown, there's lots of stuff for locals to come downtown and do and engage in, then that creative entrepreneur spirit can start to recognize that as an opportunity, and we hope that, you know, by creating more opportunity for regular activity that's focused on residents, there will be some creative entrepreneurs that kind of grasp that opportunity and start maybe honing in a little bit on how they can serve some more resident demand with their businesses. So, let's go ahead and jump into the next section. So, the second strategy, a diverse creative economy. So, this, all of these strategies, we really do go hand-in-hand, we see them as all mutually reinforcing. And again, they're not, these aren't just strategies for Taos Main Street, we really see these as community-level strategies for the revitalization of our downtown. So, really, now we're talking about building a local economy that reflects our community. Next slide, please. So, how do we do that? How do we foster a diverse creative economy? To your point, Commissioner Romano, maybe one that starts to really serve resident demand a little bit better. Well, we start with laying out some key priorities again. So, we want to, we want to really start fostering and facilitating some creative industry growth, so supporting art, design, media, food, tech, cultural production, things like that. We want to make sure that we really engage in inclusive business development practices. So, we really wanted to help start breaking down barriers for local entrepreneurs of color, youth, and other historically excluded creators. We want to slowly start cultivating a resident-focused retail mix. Again, we want to attract and support businesses that serve community needs. And then, finally, we want to continue building business and cultural partnerships, and we want to leverage these partnerships with the arts, cultural organizations, schools, and innovative entrepreneurs. And again, when you really engage local creative entrepreneurs, the community begins to see themself a little more in our downtown, and as a result, we give them more of a reason to come downtown on a more regular basis. Next slide, please. So, how are we advancing this strategy and its key priorities? We've got one specific project to talk to you today about, and this is a big one here. So, this is the Business Resource and Innovation Center, or BRIC, so really, a hub for business growth and community transformation. This is slated to happen at the building on 115 Civic Plaza Drive. Next slide, please. So, we have a mission statement for the BRIC. So, the BRIC, the Business Resource and Innovation Center, supports and changes, supports and drives business growth through system-wide changes in economic development, improving how business resources and services are delivered and equitably accessed, facilitating and streamlining support at all phases of business development, from startup to expansion, and encouraging business retention, recruitment, and resiliency. This is a collaboration of partners that is committed to championing a pro-business-friendly environment, resulting in a positive economic impacts and enhanced long-term quality of life in Taos County. Next slide, please. So, we really, we really do see this as a catalyst. Main Street sort of lingo always talks about catalytic projects. We really do believe that this is a catalytic project for our community. So, first and foremost, it's really going to help us activate Civic Plaza Drive. As you all know, Civic Plaza Drive is a street that typically doesn't have much activity happening on it. So, by the BRIC opening there, we can create a new hub for activity, which will help revitalize Civic Plaza Drive. BRIC, over time, will increase local business ownership and employment. It'll continue to build resilience into Taos's economy, maybe not making us overly focused on one sector of the economy. It'll strengthen collaborations between town, county, and the business community. And overall, we really believe that this supports the town and the county's plans and their economic goals. So, this really is going to hone in on supporting small business and small business development, which I know is a high priority for both town and county. Next slide, please. So, what specifically will the BRIC do? Well, it'll start, it'll start by helping businesses with startup and growth support. So, really, we're assisting entrepreneurs from idea to expansion. One of the ways that the BRIC is going to do this, for one, is by consolidating a lot of business services in one location. So, the one-stop-shop model is actually really, really powerful, and there's a lot of large cities that have actually adopted this model in a lot of their neighborhoods. And the idea is, if you're trying to start a business and you need a permit, a signed permit, you need to talk with SBDC, you need to connect with your local chamber, with your local economic development staff from town or county, there's one place where you can go and do that. Now, the BRIC isn't going to be able to, that's not going to be able to happen every day at BRIC, but as we launch, we do plan on starting with one day a week, and really marketing that heavily to the community. It's like, hey, you've got questions, you want to start a business up, you need permits, anything like that, you can come, you can come to one location and get all of that done. So, that streamline is a really, really important first component. This will help with retention and resiliency, you know, we also will have programs to help existing businesses stay competitive, maybe expand their offerings. We will engage in inclusive economic development practices, and again, you know, equitable access for all sectors and all communities. And this really does create a place-based impact. So, again, the first phase is really launching the one-stop-shop, the business support services. There will be some coworking space, we will launch an initial suite of programs to really just help with business coaching. Anwar at SBD has really helped us identify the three key services that business come to him and ask for the most often. So, we're really going to hone in on that, and those are, those are just one-on-one business advice and coaching, accounting, and legal. Now, obviously, we won't be able to provide, you know, we won't be able to provide an accountant to, you know, do taxes for a business, but we will have accounting services to really help businesses develop best practice for accounting and bookkeeping. Next slide, please. So, just a brief update on where we are now. So, again, at 115 Civic Plaza Drive, we've developed a pro forma for the building, so we have a really good understanding of what the building will cost every month to operate, and we're in the process of completing the renovation plan. So, we're not talking about really large-scale renovations, but just renovations to make sure that we can get the primary partners located in the building and get the first phase of the project launch. There's currently a lease that's being drafted by the town attorney. We've issued an RFP to several different companies and individuals to really help us build out an operational plan. The operational plan, as first, we thought we would be able to write it, but because there are so many components and because it is, you know, a partnership between town, county, Taos Main Street, SBDC, the Chamber of Commerce, and the UNM Hive, it's kind of a complex, complex plan. So, we've got a few individuals that are going to, or in a few companies that are going to provide us some estimates to help us build out that operational plan. New Mexico Main Street has already been providing technical assistance to this process, they're the ones who've done, who did the building pro forma for us, and they're also doing some design work for just some exterior improvements on the building as well. Our next step is really finalizing those agreements, beginning the first phase of renovations in the front part of the building, and then launching the BRIC. We are still slated and targeting October for the launch and rollout of the first phase of BRIC. Next slide, please. I think that's it for this section, so I'll go ahead and pause there, and if there are any questions or comments, I'm happy to answer.
Do you have a timeline, Charles, in regards to the BRIC? Like, when do we anticipate seeing it open?
So, the first, the first phase, which again, is really the one-stop-shop part of the project, we're, we still are on target for October, an October launch. So, that'll be, again, all of the primary partners in the space and sort of our initial suite of programming being offered to the general public.
Sounds exciting. Thank you.
Any other questions? Good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the last section. Okay, so, third strategy, it's about supporting responsible tourism in a community-focused district. So, we want to promote tourism that helps make the Plaza an inclusive, vibrant civic space and a model for civic tourism in Taos, while contributing to a strong local economy that expands opportunity for residents. Next slide, please. So, as most of you are aware, the community came together two years ago, maybe a little longer, and started on this, in on a destination stewardship plan. A lot of really, really great community members came forward during that process, and we got some incredible data, some incredible feedback, and I think it really underscored how important this work is going forward. So, how do we really start looking at tourism in a more equitable and a more comprehensive way? And one of the messages, and one of my main takeaways I heard from all sorts of community members throughout this process, they didn't necessarily say it in this way, but I feel like this is maybe the, one of our most important underlying points, is that we want to ensure that our community is not in service to tourism, but that tourism is actively contributing to our community's well-being. I think we've seen that all across the Mountain West, when small mountain towns, you know, become, their communities become entirely in service to the tourism industry, it leads to long-scale problematic issues, and we want to ensure that tourism is really supporting our community's well-being, and it's not so much the other way around. Next slide, please. So, I know, I know, you know, what everybody's probably thinking right now is, well, that sounds easy, but how do we do that? And fortunately, the Destination Stewardship Plan, all of the individuals and organizations that came together to develop that plan have now changed into a network of organizations who really are going to be focused in on this work, on implementing key activities, strategies, priorities within that plan, and really helping the community achieve some goals that were laid out in that plan. Taos Main Street is working through a funding agreement with Taos County and with the Town of Taos to host this work as we move forward, and as part of that, we have hired Jesse Hook, who is managing all of this Destination Stewardship work going forward, and I'm going to let her come up now and fill you in on details of where that work stands.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and all the commissioners and staff. I'm really honored to be here and excited to tell you a little bit about an update of where the Destination Stewardship Network is. Again, my name is Jesse Hook, and I am the current Destination Stewardship Network Manager. So, let's go on to the next slide. And Anisa, could we zoom in just a little bit to that? Yeah, perfect, that's great. So, I wanted to start off with a quote from our mayor, Pasqual Meistas, which is written within the Destination Stewardship Plan. Unchecked tourism growth can pose significant challenges to our environment, our culture, and our communities, and the Taos Destination Stewardship Plan, also known as the DSP, is a blueprint for guiding Taos towards a more sustainable and equitable future. This is the kind of ethic that steers a lot of our work and steered the implementation and the writing of the plan. Next slide. So, taking this plan, it's 117 pages of really amazing work and a really amazing community input, but how do we start to bite off parts of that plan and make it into reality and transform that into implementation? Next slide, please. Well, we wanted to make sure that we could ground ourselves in this new reality of taking a plan and going to implementation. What does that look like? And what is a network? What are the benefits of network management as we are currently approaching things, rather than, say, a destination management organization which operates as an independent entity? Charles mentioned earlier that right now, the network is a collaboration of many, many different stakeholders from many facets of our community, and I'll go over a little bit more of those details later. One of my first missions was really making sure to make clear our mission and our work as a network, and so, here's a screenshot of the beginning of our page on the Visit Taos website. Thank you to Gizmo Productions and Rema Christ, who helped with this kind of focusing in of our work. And like Charles said, the Destination Stewardship Network is really focused on fostering a thriving and authentic travel economy that benefits locals and visitors alike. Next slide. Another frame of reference is to kind of think of it as a community-first tourism initiative. This is the first statement within our mission, that we're a cross-sector coalition committed to advancing a more sustainable tourism economy for the Taos region. I just want to note again that it's not necessarily an independent destination management organization, but a coalition, and coalitions have a lot of strengths and beauty to their work, but it's also, can be rather complicated. Next slide, please. What grounds this complicated work are nine stewardship goals. These things, I'm sure, as leaders in our community, you are very familiar with that, these goals are needed and needed by many facets of the people and the communities that These goals are needed, um, and needed by many facets of the people, um, in the communities that make Taos home. What we're focusing on, um, these years, we're gonna take three and I'll, um, have a slide on that later. But this just gives you an idea of all the different things that we're trying to tackle as a collective. Next slide. So I mentioned network and a network being kind of a unique form of approaching this work. Networks can do a lot of things and one of their, um, really leverage points is that it's collaborative network management. So what does collaborative management do? We connect people and organizations. We provide a platform for resource and information sharing. And we begin the conversation and the planning and implementation for measurement of impact of initiatives and reporting on those and advocacy for different initiatives that are aligned within the plan. And of course, like, uh, Charles was saying earlier, a lot of this is iterative. It all leads into each other and as soon as you start doing one cycle, it all comes back together. Next slide. So the three goals that we wanted to focus on first are stewardship communications, inclusion and equity, and collaborative management. So within stewardship communications, that looks like fostering a shared, um, plan for stewardship through education and communication. Those are two Asian tools that are really powerful. And not necessarily cut and dry in how you can implement those. But if you educate community members and visit, visitors through thoughtful communication plans, that can really drive, uh, change. Two, inclusion and equity, a really large umbrella and a really important umbrella. I was excited when I came on as manager to see that the network had decided that this was a priority initiative to really start with, because I think it's one of the most important grounding goals that we could begin with, especially when it comes to developing trust. I'm sure you've heard moving at the speed of trust is a really important phrase within Taos. And I don't think we could develop that trust without showing community that we want to invest in them when it comes to our travel economy. Nine is collaborative management. That's a goal and much work within itself. So looking at how do we create and sustain a collaborative network, um, structure and, uh, for plan implementation? Next slide. I wanted to visualize how all of this complexity kind of looks. Right now, we could simplify it with three bubbles. Uh, one being the core team, which is led by Taos Main Street. The Town of Taos has representation, Taos County has representation, and the community has representation through Contessa Trujillo, who also was the, um, one who led the plan development. We have our action teams. So currently, those action teams are a product development action teams, a cultural events fund action team, and a stewardship communications action team. I'll go into who those people are and exactly what focuses their work later. Then we have myself. And when you bring everybody together, we have the network. The network also has, um, several key stakeholders who are not necessarily within the core team or the action teams, but integral to making this plan, uh, successful. All right, next slide. So who's doing what within that Venn diagram? Core team and myself, we're looking at goal number nine. So create and sustain a Destination Stewardship Network. And then with the action teams and myself, we're looking at, um, the three different action teams I mentioned earlier. So one under, um, goal one, and then two action teams under goal two. Next slide. I wanted to spend some time on governance, just so that y'all are su, are clear on what does it look like, how we're approaching this work collectively, and who is a part of that work. So the core team was our simplified, uh, kind of stamp of what we wanted to name all the folks who are making this possible at the moment. So we again have representation from the town, the county, Taos Pablo, Main Street, and then the community through Contessa Trujillo. Their why, I like to section these in a what and a who and a why and the unique values so that it's super clear who's providing this work, why are they doing the work, and what's the unique value of the work that they're doing? Sure thing. So Jessica Stern, um, is the who within Taos County. She's the Economic Development Director. Thank you, Brett. Appreciate it. Why do we have this core team? Why don't we just focus on the network? Well, we want to make sure that there's alignment within key stakeholders and those key stakeholders within government of the Taos region. Cause Taos is not just the town, it's not just the county, it's many different people operating together. So we wanted to make sure that there was focused leadership from each of those entities in the core team. We also wanted to make sure there was a network of support for myself. And then when it comes to financial planning and long-term management, um, for the project. The unique value, alignment of key stakeholders, that is something that's a lot easier to say than to do. And I think we're doing a great job of it so far. The asterisk on the bottom is that currently we are opening our arms to anyone else within, um, the Taos region who would like to contribute to the core team and dedicate to leadership of this work. So, next slide, please. This is just a slide kind of, uh, writing down and you've met me before, so you're familiar with what I do. But if you ever want to reference it again, this is kind of a description of the work that I do. More importantly, next slide. I wanted to talk about the difference between the network and the unique value of the network versus the action team and the difference between the who is operating within those spheres. Next slide. I built this on Canva, so when you click it on Canva, it kind of creates a snappy, uh, presentation, but this works great too. So the network in itself is again, government, business, land agencies as well. We have representation from the BLM, nonprofits and community members. While action teams are people who are directly aligned with the products that they are trying to implement and the, um, projects that they're trying to implement, um, when it comes to those priority actions. The why, next slide. Again, the network provides networking and coalition, those kind of values that, um, are a lot easier said than done. And so far, so successful, resource and information sharing and education and advocacy. While the action teams are ideating and designing projects, um, and implementing plans to pilot those projects. So a lot, the planning was not done with the Destination Stewardship Plan. There's still some planning and nitty-gritty to get into within the action teams. Next slide, please. So, and then highlighted in yellow is the unique value of each of those, um, facets of the network. Next slide, please. I wanted to end my presentation to the commission with a question directly from our 2023 survey. I call this Taos Tourism Trivia. What were the top three interest areas businesses wanted to see the Town of Taos prioritize? I don't know, is this the kind of, do we want any guesses in this format? Next slide, please. No, it's okay. I find this really exciting when I looked over this because I believe these are the things that we are currently doing and so many organizations are currently doing in addressing those community concerns and, um, desires, wants and needs. So the community really wanted all of us to start working together, developing business partnerships, strengthen arts and culture events, and improve existing visitor and outdoor facilities. As we have seen through this presentation today, that stuff that has already broken ground and seeing action within community. So I could not be more excited to be a part of that, uh, puzzle. Alrighty, I'll take, uh, questions on my section, if you have any.
My question is around, uh, the role that, uh, Main Street is playing at this time. It appears that you, Main Street is playing like a coordinating role amongst all these different entities, the town, county, stewardship, uh, whoever else might be there. And so, uh, so I'm wondering, uh, how long, how, how long is the tenure for the grant that, uh, Main Street received? And, uh, and also maybe a little bit on, uh, on the million-dollar grant that was provided for improvements?
I'll let Charles speak to that. Thank you, Commissioner Evermira.
Let's take the last part of your question first. So the, the capital outlay grant? Can you, can you, could you maybe specify your question again for me on that?
Yeah, that was, uh, the million-dollar grant that was, uh, provided, actually it was to the town. But then we had discussions in the last meeting, joint meeting between the town and the, in the county as to how those funds would be spent. And, uh, so that, that's one part of the question. But the overall question also is, uh, how long is the, the Main Street grant? How long will Main Street be around being funded?
Okay, so to capital outlay first, uh, the, I forget the exact date, but I think several, several weeks ago at one of the, the council's last meetings, they passed the, the required resolution to, uh, allow the county to act as the fiscal agent for the million-dollar capital outlay grant. From there, the process moves over to the state. Their, their chief financial officer within the Economic Development Department is currently reviewing the, the county's last audit. Um, and once, once that has been reviewed and approved, then the state will officially enter into a grant agreement with Taos County. I expect that to happen very soon. As of last week, they, they said that the, the financial officer was reviewing the audit and that they would hopefully have the grant agreement, um, even possibly by this week. But I would expect in the next couple of weeks, that grant agreement should, should, should come in front of the commission for, um, consideration and approval. As far as, as far as the, the other part of that question, um, Main Street took on this role with Destination Stewardship, I think, I think based on a few, a few different, um, situations that were kind of unfolding as the plan itself wa, was completed. The steering committee felt very strongly at the time that they didn't, they didn't feel like they wanted to see this work live inside the town government or the county government. They thought that because of the collaborative nature of this plan, that they didn't, um, they, they wanted to see, see it, continue to happen in a, in a more collaborative way. Main Street came forward and, and offered an, an option. Being that we have, uh, we have an established relationship with both the town and the county, we said, well, we could, uh, we can act as host for, for now. We, we, we're not really considering ourselves to, to, to be long-term. Although if the network kind of makes that determination, like it's working well, we would consider becoming a long-term host. But really, um, the idea was, uh, create, create a system where the town and the county can, can bring funding together through Main Street. We can provide sort of the administrative capacity for this to happen. So we can, we can make sure that the network manager is, is contracted, is paid, and that any other, any other programs are, are administered, accounted and, and paid for through, through our, through our, um, organization.
And, and the Destination Stewardship Plan was a county-wide plan, not just a town?
That's correct. And because, because of its, uh, strategically, our third strategy really was already looking at this idea of how do we, how do we make, uh, how do we facilitate a more responsible tourism economy? How do we make sure that it's contributing more actively to our community? Again, we're acting as host, but really this whole plan was always seen as a county or even region, region-wide plan, the Enchanted Circle. So, um, our hosting of this, um, you know, it will continue to be that. It will continue to be a county and a region-wide, um, effort.
And then Main Street itself, I mean, you're providing this coordinated effort now, how long will that continue?
So we, we, the, the first agreement that the county, uh, and the town, um, sort of entered into, happened in December of 2024. So we've got, we've got a contract that, that takes the, our hosting of this work, one year from December 2024 to, uh, December 2025. I know that we've obviously got some, uh, discussions to have considering, you know, the, the fiscal year that's upcoming. We've had some discussions with our board. We certainly are willing to act, act as host for a second year. But I think we, the core team and the network overall has to have some longer-term conversations about what is that, what does that organizational structure look like for the overall effort? And, you know, is that, is that gonna continue to, to, to sort of be, uh, hosted by Main Street? Or is there another, is there another option for doing that? So I guess, uh, shorter answer would be we will continue to host until we find another solution that all of the stakeholders are on board with.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Charles. Appreciate it.
Chairman Moscarranias, County Commission, thank you for your time this morning. We really appreciate you giving us time to present this work. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, all of you. Moving along to item 11, Resolutions and ordinances. Item A, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution 25-29. Resolution Adopting the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, ICIP for fiscal year 2027 to 2031. Mr. Chris Madrid.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, as you know, each year, uh, we must submit, oh, by the way, I'm here on behalf of, uh, Ms. Don Romero. She's in interviews at this moment. As you know, we need to submit our ICIP for our senior programs. In the summertime, we'll submit our regular ICIP for our general programs. And, uh, what you have before you is a resolution, uh, that, uh, also attached there too is our ICIP. We've done quite well in the past years receiving funding. Uh, this last year, the legislature didn't provide much funding, but it looks like we're fortunate enough to get, uh, the funding for our final phase in La Cienega in, um, in Costa. Uh, going forward, I asked on what our priority is and, uh, we're gonna be looking for vehicles next time we request funding.
Thank you. Any, uh, questions for Chris?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve.
Been a motion by Commissioner Romero, second by Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero? Chair Moscarranias?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Madrid. Appreciate that. Moving right along to 11B, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution 2025-28. A resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a local government planning grant agreement by and between the New Mexico Finance Authority and Taos County, New Mexico, which is the grantee. Chris Madrid.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, this is very procedural. It's actually a strange procedure. Usually when we have a grant, we do the grant agreement, we receive the grant, we implement the grant. Uh, the process here that NMFA requires is we substantively move forward with our work and then after the fact, we approve the grant. So all this is, is an approval of the grant agreement that will allow, allow them to eventually pay us for the work that will be completed in the near future.
Cool. Any, what are your wishes, commissioners?
I have no questions and if there's none, I'll go ahead and, uh, make a motion to approve. Resolution number 2025-28.
Been a motion by Commissioner Vehil, second by Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero? Chair Moscarranias?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along to 11C, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution 2025-26. A resolution continuing, uh, the ad valorem tax for the benefit of El Valle de los Rancho's Water and Sanitation District. Mr. Harabial.
Thank you, Chair Moscarranias, members of the commission. This is an annual procedure that we do around this timetable of, uh, approving this resolution that will get submitted to, uh, New Mexico Taxation and Revenue Department. It's for their ad valorem tax. If there's any questions of El Valle, I'm sure Mr. Chavez would be happy to answer them. If not, I recommend approval.
Mr. Chairman, uh?
Yeah, Mr. Chavez, this year, I'm wondering if he could maybe give us at least a little bit of an update on regionalization, and particularly, the proposed merger of El Valle and Yanocamado Mutual.
Commissioners, thank you for that question, Commissioner Romero. As you know, Yanocamado and El Valle de los Rancho's have been working side by side for quite a while now, all the way back to 2010. We currently are not one organization, but we are now in the process of moving towards combining into one organization, similar to what Penasco and Rolarte did. And so, we've had two public hearings for the people to know what it is that we're doing. And we have had no opposition to it. We are going to submit our, I'm sorry, our, we are going to submit our documents to the Secretary of State, Articles of Incorporation, now in June. And so, by July, we should probably be one organization. The idea of getting our bank accounts and everything together, getting employee identification number, getting insurance and all of that, that's going to take some time to do. But we are well in the process of doing it. And we're doing it for the benefit of Yanocamado and for the providing a better service, continued service to Yanocamado. And so, we, the legislature and government is looking pretty favorably at, they're pushing all these mutual domestics towards that end, right? And so, this last legislative session, we also had, just to add a little bit more, we also combined with El Prado Water and Sanitation District, three mutual domestics from the Roqueiro area, Upper Desmontes, Lower Desmontes, and Valdez, Yanocamado and Rancho Water and Sanitation, El Valle de los Rancho Water and Sanitation District. And we asked for some money so we can plan in helping the people from Desmontes and that area to join their water systems. And by joining, I mean connecting them together so that they can provide help to each other. And the legislature looked at that very favorably, and we got $300,000 to start that process. So, I hope I answered your question, but we're well on our way.
Yeah, so there's some action going on regarding regionalization of water systems.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vehil.
Chavez, a question for you, or a couple of questions. The mill levy before us is for 6.812. Is that different from last year?
The last time that we actually increased that is two years ago. I think Commissioner Romero was in our, as part of our board at that time. And so, as the county manager said, bringing this forward to the commission, we're required to do it every year, but this year, it is not an increase.
Okay, and then, the next question. In this merge, do you anticipate, and this might be a little bit too premature, but do you anticipate an increase in the mill levy as you merge? You know, mill levies are determined by budgets and needs and valuation. Have you all done a preliminary?
Thank you for the question. And during our hearings, we emphasized that both Yanocamado and El Valle are pretty sound financially. We do not need any additional funds as a result of this merger. We, but, you know, as this organization moves forward, even without this merger, Valle de los Rancho's would probably need to increase sometime in the future if we want to continue putting sewer lines in the valley. But the other thing that we did say is, as far as water is concerned, the rates are going to remain exactly the same as they are right now. Both Valle de los Rancho's and Yanocamado charge the same amount for water right now, and it's going to remain the same. Thank you.
Mr. Chavez, a quick question. So, this is great, and I see that positive thing. Moving forward, do you guys have a long-term plan? Or have you discussed what the county's plan as far as roads, resurfacing, all that, to work together that way the infrastructure is in place before we start resurfacing particular roads?
That's, we work very closely through our engineer, Alex Aveta, with the county to make sure that we propose things that will be coordinated with the county. But what, I don't know if this is exactly related to your question, but what was really interesting for me this last week, we went to a conference that was happening at the, in Espaniola, at Okeo Winga Casino Resort. And the idea, it really didn't apply to water really that much. But the idea that they were discussing and the words that they're saying right now is that, in New Mexico, we have to be site-ready. And what I got to mean, that to mean is, as New Mexico or Taos, and this presentation that we were talking about, as we are moving forward, if we want to get people to do affordable housing and all that stuff, that we have to have water and sewer, electricity, and everything in place so that the construction of new housing and so forth becomes easier to do. And the funders or people that want to invest find it easier to be attracted to the area.
Thank you. Yeah, my concern was more so is, we go in and resurface a road, and then, the domestics come later and say, "We need to upgrade our lines," right? We want to work together to make sure that doesn't happen.
Yeah, we work for it, but since you asked that question, there's a little street in Yanocamado called Vista de Valle that already has sewer in it, has water, gas, and we're ready to have it paved if the county wants to go and pave it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve Resolution 2025-26.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Romero, second by Commissioner Vehil. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Moscarenas?
Yes. Thank you. Moving along to Item D, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution 2025-27, Resolution Authorizing the Ad Valorem Tax for the Benefit of El Prado Water and Sanitation District.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, staff does recommend the approval of the ad valorem tax for El Prado Water Sanitation District. Like I mentioned, in Item C, this is an annual thing that we do. Ms. Christine Dimas is here from El Prado. If there's any specific questions related to El Prado.
Commissioner Vehil.
Thank you, Chair. My only question is, are we seeing, I'm sorry, any increase this year from eight? It is 8.122. Christine, hi, how are you? Is there an increase?
Thank you for the question. There is not an increase this year. That is the same as last year.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. With that being said, I will make a motion to approve, and that would be the Resolution Number 2025-26.
Second.
Been a motion by Commissioner Vehil, second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Moscarenas?
Yes. Thank you, guys. Moving on to Item Number E, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution 2025-23, A Resolution Authorizing Taos County to Pick Up An Additional 1% For Police Member Coverage. Ms. Janay Ulem, Mr. Harameel.
Yes, she is on her way. I just don't want to hold up the process this morning. Staff does recommend approval of this resolution. This is part of our 1% para buy-down strategy that we use of all the para plans. We are missing the general employee plan on the agenda today. We'll bring it forth at another meeting, but this one would cover the sheriff's office.
Any questions? If not, what are your wishes?
Move to approve Resolution Number 2025-23, and that would be for the 1% buy-down for the police member coverage.
I'll go ahead and second that. It's been a motion by Commissioner Vehil, second by Chair Moscarenas. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Moscarenas?
Yes. Thank you. Moving along to Item F, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution 2025-22, A Resolution Authorizing Taos County to Pick Up An Additional 1% For Fire Member Coverage Contributions. Mr. Harameel.
Yes, Chair Moscarenas, staff does recommend approval of Resolution 2025-22, authorizing Taos County to pick up an additional 1% for the fire member coverage. This will be the first time the 1% buy-down will happen on the fire coverage since we moved them to the new municipal fire plan. I stand for any questions.
I just, I should have asked on the last one, but obviously, for the record here, we do have the funds to cover this, and certainly, it wouldn't be before us if we didn't. But for the record, we are good, right?
Yes, our finance team has been working this specifically. Deputy Finance Director Wendy Harris has been specifically working on the salary schedule. So, there is the money for this, and for all three of them, all four of them.
With that being said, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-22. Been a motion by Chair Moscarenas, second by Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Moscarenas?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to G, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution 2025-24, Resolution Authorizing Taos County to Pick Up An Additional 1% For Detention Officer Member Coverage Contributions. Mr. Harameel.
Yes, thank you, Chair Moscarenas. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2025-24, Resolution Authorizing Taos County to Pick Up An Additional 1% for the detention officer member coverage contribution plan. May I stand for any questions?
Move to approve Resolution Number 2025-24, authorizing, we pick up, Taos County pick up the additional 1% for detention officers.
Been a motion by Commissioner Vehil, second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero? Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Moscarenas?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Harameel. Moving right along to Item 12, Contracts, Agreements, MLUs, and Bids, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval for Award of RFP 2025-07 for Substance and/or Alcohol Treatment Services for Taos County DWI Program. Mr. Harameel, welcome.
Hi, good morning, Chairman of the Commission. Before you, in the packet is a staff recommendation for RFP 2025-07. Taos County Purchasing Department received one response to our published RFP for the substance and/or alcohol treatment services for the Taos County DWI program prior to the deadline of 2:00 p.m., Mountain Standard Time, Monday, April 28, 2025. The offer who responded was Real Grand ATP Incorporated. Based on the review conducted for this RFP, staff recommended an award for RFP 2025-07 for substance and/or alcohol treatment services for the Taos County DWI Program to Real Grand ATP Incorporated, subject to negotiations of a mutually agreeable contract, respectfully. May I stand for any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none, what are your wishes? Been a motion by Vice Chair Romero. I'll go ahead and second that. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Moscarenas?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along to Item 13A, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of the Talpa Community Market, located number four to Lienta Lane, at the Talpa Community Center. Mr. George Romero, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners, Mr. Harameel, Mr. Chio. Thank you for your time today. We are here to present the discussion regarding the Talpa Community Market. We have Ms. Lupita Morcas here today to go ahead and make that presentation. Thank you. I guess I will assist.
Perfect. Welcome.
Hi.
How are you doing?
Good morning, everyone. So, the Talpa Community Market, is my understanding, they're proposing to start May 23, every Friday till October 10. They will be operating from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Vendors will be there as early as 7:00 a.m.?
About 7:30.
7:30 to start setting up, and they should be cleaned up by 1:30 p.m. There was a presentation that was connected to the agenda, and it just shows some various pictures of past vendors and customers visiting the market.
We have that. We're looking at it. So, we have it.
There's also, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to make this presentation. So, there's another slide that says, "What did you sell at our market?" It looks like there's flowers, baked goods, crafts, jewelry, vegetables. It's my understanding that local farmers take their produce and sell their produce there. Local artists, whether it's paintings, jewelry, whatever, heavy carvings, everybody takes their stuff, baked goods, whatnot, it's all sold there. They're also in communication with the Rancho Salomentry, and Rancho Salomentry goes and visits them on Fridays as well.
They take their kids there. Actually, they have a little band that they take their kids there.
Okay. Awesome.
This is, how long have you guys been doing it?
This is our fifth year doing the market there. Our fifth year already.
And we've been working with them in preparation to make sure that everything is insured. They're working with the fire department now for their fire plan, and they've also been working with the sheriff's office in relation to security. If you decide to approve, I would recommend approval with the condition that both of those items be a conditional of approval, that they submit those items to us. The last item that we need is just a copy of their CRS number, which they're working with the Talpa Community Center. They're an umbrella under them. So, they're working with that board to be able to give them the permission to work with them on that, and which I think they already have peer approval of. And they just need to get the letter and final approval on that. And all of that should be done, hopefully, by the end of this week and prior to the beginning, which will be, this Friday will be their first market day.
Awesome.
Do we stand for any questions that you may have?
Questions, comments, anyone? Commissioner Vehil.
Thank you. This presentation is great. It gives a lot of information in regards to how this market has brought people together. I, for one, visit it and frequent it, and it's great. And it looks like out of the 18 vendors, if I read this correctly, 17 are returning. So, that says a lot. I know this is a very well-known market and visited. So, I just, thank you for putting that on. Rachel, thank you for working with these folks and getting them ready and understanding. Rachel, thank you for working with these folks and, and getting them ready and understand the conditions and we certainly want everyone to be safe and thank you for, for working with Rachel on that as well. With that being said, unless there are any other questions, I would um, make a motion to approve.
I could just say one more thing before you make your motion. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Yes.
Um, the reason why the Talpa Community Market is here today is based on our land use regulations and I'm sorry, I forgot to uh, provide this information to you at the beginning. But um, under the current land use regulations, it says that any uh, farmers markets, flea markets that want to conduct business has to go through this process and get the approval of the commission. It currently is not a application or a process that staff can um, do internally within the planning department. So that is the reason why we're here today. And uh, we've done it in the past with Talpa, with um, Pinasco, with some others and um, so probably within the next uh, couple of months, you'll be seeing that with uh, some other local organizations that also want to conduct farmers markets, flea markets, that sort of thing.
Rachel, thank you, Chair, I mean.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for saying that. Do you anticipate in the near future that uh, that process will change? And so these folks would, I mean, this is something that I think we're going to see from year to year um, happen. At least it's my hope that we're going to see this in the community. Continue.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner V. Hill, that is our hopes of, as you are aware, we're under the rewrite of the land use regulations. We're proposing it uh, to be called the Unified Development Code and um, that is something that we're looking into and changing that process. So that way, these folks don't have to come before the board and, and have this lengthy process. It could be done administratively and handled in-house, so to speak, yes.
Thank you, appreciate the clarification on all that.
Okay, then I will continue with my motion once again to approve, um, as stated.
There's been a motion by Commissioner V. Hill, second by Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner V. Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Mascherini?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Moving right along to item B, discussion, consideration, decision regarding a lodger tax sponsorship request from Leadership New Mexico, um, Ms. Jessica Stern? Or Mr. Harameel?
And she's watching the meeting because we're trading messages on the other presentation. So uh, we do have, you might remember the month of April, we did create, the commission did create a sponsorship program out of the law, the promotional site of lodger tax. So we did receive uh, one application for a sponsorship from Leadership New Mexico for their core program. Leadership New Mexico for the last several years has been having their graduation program uh, here within Taos and uh, they spend about, approximately about a week here and they finish up their classwork and then they do the graduation. Uh, and so they're renting uh, rooms here and other venues. But um, they asked for a sponsorship and under the new sponsorship guidelines, this meets that criteria and staff does recommend uh, approval of uh, the sponsorship of, for Leadership New Mexico.
Any questions, comments?
I just have a comment. I was noticing that the estimation of $90,000 plus will be spent during this graduation in regards to people coming in, spending money here to eat and, and to, to stay. So I think that's pretty impressive, $5,000 and $98,000.
I'm not sure what they're doing this year. I know last year they went on uh, Los Rios River Runners. So, so you see that generation, so it's about a generation of tax dollars. So it's about uh, teamwork, but also this is where it helps the economy. And then they're uh, renting the space at El Montes Sagrada as well as the rooms. So you have, you have that along with whatever catering they're doing for the different events. So I believe the $90,000 is, is, we get that number from them.
So this is our first under the sponsorship program. It's really exciting.
Yes.
Okay.
Awesome. Commissioner Romero?
No, I would make a motion to approve if there are no further questions.
Motion made by Commissioner Romero, do we have a second? Second by Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Yes. Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Mascherini?
Yes. Thank you, Jessica, Mr. Harameel. Moving right along to item C, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of creating a new position within the DWI Department and inclusion into the Concrencia Plan, which will increase the salary and benefits for fiscal year 2025, 2026 in the DWI Department. Mr. Rolero, how you doing? Welcome.
How you doing, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, Mr. Trujillo, Mr. Harameel? I'm requesting for a part-time position in our program. Basically, we used to have a full-time position. We used to collect about, before I became uh, Director, about $320,000 a year. And that, that position would help us with the in-kind. Now I'm collecting somewhere over half a million dollars into this program, which puts a 10% to the county a little higher, a little lot higher. And uh, I'm requesting this position because our finances are now being looked at by us. Finance does help us out a lot, a great deal. But there's other finances that DFA wants us to do with paperwork and proofs and stuff like that. This position will also help us out within the office. We have not been fully staffed in years. No other coordinator has a caseload and I'm carrying 80 myself along with my two officers at 120 each and all she should carry is 80. This would relieve some uh, pressure there. It would relieve um, some of the in-kind match that we're always looking for. I do collect fees, that I do help out with in-kind match, but that's also the nest egg. Last year, we were somewhere between $38,000 and $42,000 short and luckily I had that in my nest egg. But if I continue to try to help with the in-kind and whatever else that we're doing, I wouldn't have that money saved for any emergencies that like, what could happen. And with the laws and stuff, and stuff changing with us uh, coming up, we don't know exactly how much we're to get per year. This year, I've already written and have $463,799. I'm looking to write for another $200,000. If I get $137,000, out of that 200, I'll be making over $600,000, which is $60,000 in 10% in-kind to the county. So this would help us out in more than a couple of ways. So that's what I'm requesting for today.
Commissioner V. Hill?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Johnny, for uh, those numbers. I know you've always done really, really well in, in acquiring these grants. Are any of these grants, do they cover operational? Will they cover some of the costs associated with this decision?
Yes, they do. Uh, they do cover some of the costs for our preventionists and then they cover distribution, which is about $100,000 shorter what it takes to pay out all. But I, I know, I know we can't pay distribution of the whole program.
No, not the whole program. No, distribution pays the, the force staff that it's required to do. There's also another grant that pays for the team court and prevention specialist. They, she's paid out of a different grant that's also written by Johnny that he has, which is included in the figures that he gives you. This, this position will be paid out of the Finance Department as a match for Johnny's program. So it's not being paid by the grant itself, it's being paid by the county as a match. So the match will be met by this position and they will do the work to do anything that is needed for reporting and, and documentation purposes to help with the grant.
Right, got it. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
And years, years ago, just for your information, years ago when we were doing $230,000 per year, the county actually had us a full-time position. And through the years, kind of faded out and now all I'm asking for is a part-time position just to help us out, but more ways than one. And I believe uh, Mr. Harameel is here. Uh, I believe I got the approval set from him, from HR, from Finance. So I went through all the channels that we had to go through to make sure this is okay in front of you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Been a motion by Commissioner Romero. I'll go ahead and second that. Chair Mascherini, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner V. Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero? Chair Mascherini?
Yes. Thank you, Sinio, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. And also just to let you know on your uh, 12A uh, contracts, I also write for $70,000 to $80,000 for outpatient, or outpatient treatment for Rio Grande. So just to let you know that, that's also written by me as well. Thank you very much for your time today.
Moving right along to item D, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of 2025 Valuation Maintenance Plan, or County Deputy Assessor, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for being here today. On behalf of Taos County Assessor, Maria Dimas, we will be presenting our 2025 Valuation Maintenance Plan. You will hear from our interim Chief Appraiser, Daniela Rayel, our Senior Assessment Specialist, Elena Romero, and our GIS Coordinator, Eric Montoya. This information is designed to be both informative and beneficial, providing you with a clear understanding of our office's functions, needs, and current status of our reappraisal plan. I encourage you to ask questions at any point during the presentation as we are happy to answer any questions and I'll be turning it over now to Daniela.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sinio.
So I'm asking you to bear with me, it's protest season, so I've been talking for a few days straight. We'll try to move this along, I guess. If there's anything that you would like me to spend a bit of time on, let me know. Please feel free to jump in. And of course, I'll put emphasis on those items that I feel need to be emphasized. So um, I'm not going to spend too much time through, in the statistic portion of it, although feel free to welcome, I welcome any questions you might have. In general, um, we're increasing across the board. Values are increasing, parcel counts increasing, um, valuation by district is increasing. We can see that um, the majority of residential value is, takes place in and around the Taos, town of Taos area. And so the statistical portion is kind of speaks for itself. So before I move past that, um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. And if not, then we'll get kind of right into the plan. Okay, so first I'd like to speak a little bit about the state of appraisal, which is my department. We continue to face challenges and we really are, are seeing two to three main challenges. One of them is the limitations imposed on us by our software, Triatic. One continues to be our access to IAO training for our appraisal staff. And new this year is the necessity of increased valuation maintenance to offset the recent constitutional amendments that benefit veterans. And so we're having to kind of fill that into our previously established plan. So I'm not going to spend too much time on Triatic because we've kind of talked about this before and we're all kind of working towards a solution there. Remains an obstacle, but it doesn't keep us from doing our work. Staffing levels have maintained, have been maintained relatively well and my department, I haven't had any turnover at all since pre-compensation plan, but all those increases that have kind of been trickling out have just further solidified my staff. My senior appraiser and I continue to invest a significant amount of time and energy into the training of our staff. Some of that is a necessity because if they don't get it from us, they're not going to get it from IAO. And so in a sense, we're kind of subsidizing that. Excuse me. We've started to transition one of our staff members over to a more uh, mass appraisal focus, which should allow us to do some of that maintenance that we, that I kind of touched on. And so I'll read this portion just because I think it's important and I want to make sure. Valuation maintenance has become vital. Tax year 2025 saw the Taos County tax base absorb the loss in value. That was a direct result of the constitutional amendment increasing the standard veteran's exemption. The full value lost was $19,652,901. And so while we wholeheartedly support and endorse the increased exemption amounts for veterans, there's a, a cost associated with it and that's a direct loss to our tax base. And through our reappraisal efforts, we were able to offset that loss completely so that we're not in a revenue, operating revenue loss situation similar to Torrance County or I believe Union, I don't know, I forget which other county. There's at least one other county that was in a revenue loss situation this year. For tax year 2026, we are anticipating another hit to the tax base due to the constitutional amendment that will allow veterans with a percentage of disability to be taxed on a reduced taxable value. Due to the nature of this exemption, it's difficult to project exactly what the numerical impacts will be. However, we aim to offset these impacts by pursuing valuation maintenance efforts throughout the county. And so just last week, we got our first pink certificate, which is a percentage of disability, a gentleman in Questa have 30% disability. So of course, that's not going to be applied to tax year 2026, but the way it looks like they'll be applied is any exemption that a veteran's eligible for will be subtracted from the taxable value first. So as an example, um, if they have a standard veteran's exemption, then $10,000 will be subtracted from their taxable value. If they have a head of household exemption, then 2,000 will be subtracted from their taxable value. And then if they're 30% disabled, then they'll sit, they'll only be, after those amounts are subtracted, they'll be paying 70% of the taxable amount. And so the difficulty in projection is because that's highly specific to each veteran's disability percentage and then to the value of their property. So in some situations, you may see a significant decrease in value if the veteran owns a valuable or high-value piece of property. And so there's really not a way at the moment with the information we have to project what the impacts will be to the tax base. And so our best effort at the moment is just to plan kind of countywide maintenance where we can, how we can, and the most, oh, and we'll talk a little bit about that later, but probably the quickest way to do that would be through uh, land values, valuation means, because they don't necessarily need a, a site visit to do. So um, move on a little bit and we'll touch more on methods if you have questions, but feel free to jump in, all of you, of course.
If you have a question, Commissioner, in regards to this?
Yeah, thank you. So um, thank you for, for breaking that down, that really helps. In regards to the, um, what you refer to here as the standard veteran's exemption, which has gone from 4,000 to 10,000, correct?
Yes.
And the full of value lost is 19 million, uh, 652,901. When you convert that into actual dollars, and I tried to do uh, an average and I did 18 mils per thousand because it's all residential.
Sure.
I could be off on that mil levy because I haven't seen the tax rates. But doing the math there, I've come up with 117,000. Does that sound about right?
Or tax dollars lost?
Yeah, actual dollars. Because I, and we talked value, right? But for us and for finance, uh, what's really key here is what are we going to lose in dollars?
And what I'll tell you, the same thing I always tell you is I don't have that calculation because since I deal with value, this is going to be spread across multiple districts with multiple tax rates.
Right, which is why I used an average.
You'll take your average, right? So there's a lot of, I guess, room for error, which is why we're reluctant to provide a, a figure, especially given that that's not actual revenue lost because the tax base increases offset that loss, right?
But just looking at that little piece, right, at that?
Right. So, so yeah, to answer your question, I don't have the, the amount in tax dollars.
Okay, that's fair. And, and just so you know, Commissioners, I just took that average and, and that's basically how you calculate taxes. And uh, you're right, hopefully we'll see an offset, but we know that we're already having to make a 117,000.
So yeah, and the reason I mentioned that number is just to, I guess, provide context. Where we're talking about any other increases we've done, whether net new or valuation maintenance, it's with the stat, the, I guess, this established that we've already lost 19 million dollars worth of value before we even get into what we did do this year. So um, I'll move on and I'll keep the next portion brief, but just discussing once more, training. So I'll move on, and I'll keep the next portion brief, but just discussing once more, training, we're still hopefully going to be working with on both admin and HR to address the training policy. So we're still kind of locked out from accessing I double A O training. We've had some promising talks, and we have planned to get something on the books as soon as possible. I think our next registration deadline is June second for the summer course, in Albuquerque this year, which is new. But yeah, it's critical, can't emphasize it enough. The more trained and educated our staff is, the better the tax base will be administered. Since it's not a condition of employment, you will still have the same people administering the tax base, they'll just be less well-trained than they could be if we had access to this training. So I can emphasize that enough, and I hope that if there is an amendment down the road to the personnel policy that would allow that, that we'd have your support in that as well. Something too that we wanted to include this year is a section about the reappraisal fund. There's been a bit of confusion, I believe, and maybe uncertainty as to when we can use the reappraisal fund. What are the mechanisms that would hinder us or allow us to do so? And so I included a portion in here, because really the only hindrance or the only approval that's needed is that our expenses be included in a reappraisal plan that is approved by the majority of the Commission, right? And so frequently, our budget is approved, and that's separate from our reappraisal plan. And so because in a given year, we have some ideas of the big expenditures we're going to have, we may not know exactly what we're going to spend at all times. And so we're in situations sometimes where we're going to have to justify a purchase, because it serves our reappraisal efforts, but because it's not immediately obvious, as an example, suppose we need to invest in a new plotter for GIS. Our function in the office is to locate, assess, and maintain accurate records for any property we assess. And so if we can't locate that property as part of our GIS functionality, then we can't properly assess it as part of our reappraisal efforts. And so there are many things that, while not immediately obvious for reappraisal purposes, they're going to tie in one way or the other. And I kind of talk about that here, and I can actually read it, so that it's a little bit more, I guess, clearer than just me rambling on all wrong quotes, so give me a second. Okay, the County Property Valuation Fund, or reappraisal fund, was created by the Legislature in nineteen eighty-six to ensure that county assessors would have the financial resources to meet their obligations of property valuation maintenance. In the creation of this fund, assessors were given wide discretion on how they utilize these monies to ensure they have the resources they need for the timely reappraisal of their respective counties. Previously, we've discussed the importance of being able to utilize our reappraisal fund for appraiser I double A O training. This need cannot be emphasized enough. However, we also intend to utilize our reappraisal fund in a number of other ways to support our efforts, including but not limited to the acquisition of additional equipment, computers or laptops, hardware, and vehicles as needed, training for appraisal and non-appraisal staff that improves the overall function of our office, and the acquisition of aerial imagery and software or services that facilitate our work. It's worth mentioning that the location and identification of a property is a necessary part of the appraisal of that property. As such, it is often necessary to support the GIS department with the reappraisal fund when the GIS budget cannot cover necessary expenses. This is true for records keeping as well. The purpose of the assessor's office is to locate, assess, and maintain records for all properties in Taos County. Records keeping plays a critical role in valuation maintenance, among many other things. Improvements to records keeping, whether they be material expenses or training expenses, may need to be subsidized at times by the reappraisal fund. It is important to allow an assessor's office the utilization of their reappraisal fund to acquire the resources they need to better fulfill their function, rather than forcing an assessor's office to rely heavily on their reappraisal fund to operate their office. With the support of finance, we have increasingly moved towards a better, cleaner general fund and GIS budget. With the Commissioner's support, we hope to be given the discretion to utilize our reappraisal fund to support the mission of our office. And so kind of a saying that with your approval, we would like to be able to use our reappraisal fund, to be given the discretion to use our reappraisal fund. Obviously, we still need to follow procurement, we still have all those things that we need to follow. I just would like to kind of have that out there, this is our intention, we would like to be able to use our fund the way we see fit, as long as it is in accordance with personnel policy and procurement policy as well. Okay, so if there are no questions, this is kind of the important part, I guess, this is what we did, this is what we're going to do.
Can I pause you right there? Just because it will fit better, my questions will fit better. Can you help us understand, when you send someone, when someone is sent to an I double A O course, what's the cost around that, from lodging to the course?
I believe the course, the course, sorry for interrupting you. The course itself, I believe, is around?
Three hundred?
About four fifty, and we're getting books.
So about four hundred and fifty dollars, including materials and books for the course per diem.
Yeah, I'm seeing around, over a week, maybe eight hundred?
So about eight hundred a week for per diem. Yeah, so costs, not prohibitive, but it does cost.
Okay, and I just want to understand, the policy, the way it's written right now, is the first time the county covers it? If they pass the course, then they can continue, and the county will continue. And if they don't pass the course, is that when they're required?
Right.
Yeah, because I think it used to be two before, Brent, I don't know when.
I think it was silent on it previously, I could be wrong, but we may have had an internal policy. The policy, as it's written now, says the county will pay only for expenses incurred relative to the first examination of any specific certification, which is applicable to the employee's position within the county's organizational structure. If the employee fails the test on his or her first attempt, all expenses related to subsequent testing to receive the certification will be the sole responsibility of the employee. And so there's not any room in there to allow us to use our reappraisal fund, because it doesn't say will no longer be paid for out of the general fund, it just says it's the responsibility of the employee. And so that's a potential room, we've kind of shopped around potential solutions. And that's kind of the critical point, though, that any subsequent attempts must be paid for by the employee versus out of the reappraisal fund or general fund.
So currently, there are five appraisers?
Yes, five full-time appraisers. My position is kind of unfillable right now.
Is that what the asterisk means?
Yeah, because I'm occupying both positions right now, only get paid for one, but we can't hire until I am full-time as Chief Appraiser.
Okay, the reason why I'm really focusing on this right now is because I know the importance of having appraisers take these courses, pass these courses, is key in protest, right? You get obviously a better success in regards to valuing property. How many are currently unable to go forward, or how many?
All but one.
All but one?
Right, all but one, not counting me or my senior appraiser, because we're already just continuing to get face. Let's, one of our staff members, she is still eligible to take the upcoming courses, but all the rest of them will need to either be approved by Grant, or a temporary solution will need to be established prior to them going to the July training.
And Commissioners, just, I think part of, and I've seen it in the past, is, you know, when folks get hired on, those courses are only once a year, or once every so often, so it depends on, you know, they can come on and be there one month, and then the course comes up. They haven't had enough time to really, you know, be trained or have that lived experience or that working experience. So it's almost like they're going into an area where it's really hard, you know, it doesn't lend to success. And so I'm just wondering how you revamp that program. Do you start off here? Because I think you alluded to that you're actually doing some training here, to kind of get them ready?
Yeah, so while training in general, right, so when you're talking about like a protest process, they need to have enough familiarity to explain the statute involved in the increase of a property, right? They need to be comfortable enough to understand how to describe what their methods were to value that property, and then just the building of an argument, right, which is something that you may not have ever had to do in your life, is formally develop an argument that is logical and consistent, unless you're, of course, an attorney. But the rest of us, we have to kind of figure out how to present that, right? And to do it backed by the statutes and the methods that I double A O that we rely on, right? That come from I double A O, Marshall and Swift, NMAC, all those things. So while the training, of course, would help with I double A O, obviously, me and my senior appraiser Juan, we're the ones that absorb all that training, right? So time spent, we could be spending, working on our plan, addressing other property types, we're investing in our staff, which is great. But it also would help to have outside training as well.
Okay, well, just wanted to point that out, we should in the future look at what we can do there to help. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for spending that extra time on it, it's one of the most critical things that I think we have in the plan, honestly. So plan progress in the year twenty twenty-five, I'm going to read this portion, because I think it's kind of important to go point by point. In tax year twenty twenty-five, we changed our approach to the valuation of the county, shifting to the reappraisal of municipalities. In general, these are value-dense areas where the amount of time spent traveling is minimal, and the time spent on reappraisal generally results in more significant value increases. We primarily focused on two areas for reappraisal this year, the Town of Red River and the Town of Taos. In the Town of Taos, also known as District One-In, we reviewed several property types for our preliminary pass. I say preliminary, because we're not in Taos proper yet, and that'll be this year. All properties benefiting from the agricultural special method evaluation were reviewed. All active building permits were reviewed early in twenty twenty-four. All short-term rentals identified by the Town of Taos were visited and revalued as needed. All non-residential condominiums were revalued as needed, and all residential condominium units received a three percent value increase. Cannabis dispensaries were reviewed and valued when necessary. Those efforts resulted in a full value increase of fifty-two million, six hundred and seventy-three, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And so you can see, even with that amount there, that we've already kind of offset the veterans' loss to the tax base. And as I'm looking down, feel free to interrupt me if I don't see you trying to get my attention. In the Town of Red River, or District nine-two-five-I, we conducted a comprehensive reappraisal of the majority of town. Eight reappraisal assignment areas were created and assigned to appraisal staff, covering Red River proper, as well as the Bitter Creek Road, Wild Oak Village, and Young Ranch areas. And so that's kind of directly to the north, towards the north mountainside on the eastern end of town, and then the far east, just outside of town, technically it's not part of the municipality, but Young Ranch, it's kind of right there. We're still finalizing our reappraisal efforts in Red River, and we have a targeted end date of June, end of June. Today, our reappraisal efforts in Red River have led to a full value increase of forty-seven million, seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars. And so there you see again another chunk that is going to help offset the current veterans and see a maintenance increase. And so we should see, hopefully, a tax rate, corresponding tax rate decrease in those areas. It's worth mentioning that one of the biggest drivers of value increases in both reappraisal areas was our reappraisal of condominiums. Our senior appraiser has conducted one of the most thorough reviews of condominiums in several years. While there remains work to be done on condos, we are satisfied with the progress so far. We have about forty protests right now, or so, we're in protest period right now, and a good amount of them are condos. So we'll see what we're able to hang on to. Some of these were definitely kind of triggering protests to get people to disclose information to us. It's also worth mentioning that we implemented a three percent increase on residential properties in Red River, Taos Ski Valley, as well as residential condominium units throughout Taos County. Those are all areas where we're very comfortable with where the ceiling should be for those properties, so we implemented the three percent, because we knew we could.
Daniela, Commissioner Beal has a question.
I'm ready, go ahead.
So can you talk a little bit about the short-term rentals? And I really like the idea that you are working with the town and certainly with our planning department. Are you coding those a particular way so we can distinguish?
We're coding, we do have a code, a standalone code for short-term rentals as non-residential properties. And so that's the approach we're taking, because that would allow us to revalue them, and further, the definition of residential properties doesn't, and this is from statute, doesn't include hotels, motels, or any structure used for transient housing. And that's kind of our argument, as to why we can reclassify them and revalue them. Otherwise, they'd be subject to a three percent limitation. We have some protests on that front as well. There was a court case, and I forget the county, that we hoped would be able to give us some backing. I believe the case was dismissed pretty much due to failure to pay some fees. It was an actual satisfying decision, I don't think, was made. And so we'll see where we end up after this protest season, because that's kind of where the Town of Taos has a couple hundred. We've pulled, we've requested the counties, and that's more, significantly more. And so we kind of want to establish what that's going to look like through hearing before we start addressing the ones that are outside of the Town of Taos.
And so they will be classified as non-residential versus res, and we all know non is a much higher tax rate.
Right, higher tax rate, and opening up the home site and the house to full reappraisal, rather than just a three percent increase.
And I guess also, just one last question there, are you also identifying those that are brand-new for the very first time? So you get that new maintenance, or is it really?
I mean, I don't know, and you're talking about like?
Like if someone's building it for the very first time.
Right, and so that's part of our net new capture, right? We do code it as a new structure, new condo, new, but I don't know that we would code a new short-term rental for a previously existing structure as a net, as a new residence or a new structure. Because it's, and I guess I could be convinced otherwise, I would see it as a maintenance increase, because it's a previously assessed structure, that's values increasing.
And where I'm coming from, just so you know, is because we all know that anything new does not have that yield control, I mean, we can
Right.
We're able to bring that in, and of course, if it's existing, we can't, but I'm anticipating that as people continue moving forward in housing, we might see some new growth.
Right.
And so.
Sure, yeah, for a new structure, a new structure of any type, we'll code it as new. Non-res status allows us to revalue anything, obviously, or maybe not, obviously. Anything that's non-residential, we're able to revalue at any point, we are not limited by any kind of cap or limitation now. So should I?
And I think just one last question before you move on, in regards to your three percent, is that for twenty twenty-five, or is it?
Tax year twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so where people are seeing that increase.
Yeah, well, they'll be seeing that on their notices.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so that's where we've been, and now this is kind of where we're looking at going in this coming year. Following our conclusion of the Red River reappraisal, we will focus our reappraisal efforts on the Town of Taos. Rather than focusing on property types, we'll begin creating reappraisal area assignments to be assigned on an appraisal team basis, so kind of geographical chunks of property. The reappraisal of the Town of Taos remains a substantial undertaking. The Town of Taos is comprised of nearly a dozen sub-districts which correspond with the town zoning map. Many areas have high-density and mixed-use property types. Realistically, we will likely spend the next two years, at least, on the reappraisal of the Town of Taos. As mentioned previously, the impending changes to the exemption for a disabled veteran with a percentage of disability necessitates valuation maintenance increases throughout the county. Doing so will help offset the loss to the tax base in each district. We will especially look to the reappraisal of vacant land, as well as the review of properties benefiting from the special method of valuation. That one's a bit contentious, but it's also one of those things that need to be done. As an example, and kind of go off on a sidebar a bit, Penasco, District Four, their non-res values have been pretty level, they've barely increased over the past few years. They also have one of the highest tax rates in the county right now, and that's happened over the course of the past like four to five years. And so I pulled a sample property, just And so I pulled a sample property, um, just to, to take a look at it. And in that time, over the past four years or five years, the value remained the same, but the taxes doubled on the property due to the tax rates. Um, now I know that, um, the Penasco schools are looking at doing another, uh, bond, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. And in this particular property, I looked at the value and it's half of what it should be. And so we're kind of in a situation in Penasco and in other areas as well where things need to be revalued so that tax rates can kind of come down. But these people, people of Penasco and other areas have already seen their taxes double over the past four years. And so it's a bit of a conundrum where do we review ag properties now to increase our tax base, you know, to do our maintenance for an area where they're already kind of taxed a lot? And so this is kind of a situation that we're going to see play out in a couple of different areas. Um, Penasco is notable because of its really high tax rate. And so this is kind of what I was talking about when we're mentioning need, the need for maintenance in different areas. Because if, for example, Penasco does approve their bond, and I recognize the need for it with the school, they're going to be pretty close to capacity, to max capacity, which means any rev, any tax base loss there may necessitate a tax rate increase, but there not be, may not be room for a tax rate increase. And so the only way to offset that is by doing maintenance. And so I'm mostly putting this out there because this is something that we're considering in our, in our office and also for you, Chairman, that's your, you know, your district and, and the people that will ask you for those, those things now. We haven't really come up with a course of action, but I want to kind of put it out there that's something that we're very much discussing. How best to really fulfill our function while not placing an undue burden on any particular group or, or area? So, yeah, um, I'll, I'll move along and if anyone has any other questions, feel free to, to jump in. Um, after the reappraisal of the town of Taos, we will look towards the reappraisal of Questa. Once the municipalities are complete, we will focus on the remaining sub districts and to complete the reappraisal cycle. As staff acquire training, experience and knowledge, and less time is spent developing policies and processes, our reappraisal efforts will become more efficient. It will also become easier to set accurate forecasts for the time needed to complete individual reappraisal components. We are optimistically aiming for four years to completion of the current reappraisal. As always, this forecast is subject to change based on staffing and the direction given by the assessor and the property tax division and constitutional amendments that now kind of are forcing our, our hand in, in some areas that we may not have needed to go before. A couple of things that we're going to be looking at, um, this coming year is, um, short term rentals. So we have reviewed all short term rentals in the town of Taos that were identified by the town's third party service. I believe they use Granicus as well. Um, we'll be monitoring any short term rental related valuation protests closely. After the protests shake out, we'll look at applying any lessons learned from our review of the town of Taos to review of all short term rentals across the county. This initiative is a potential source of valuation maintenance increases, as well as an effort to align with the town of Taos and the Taos County Planning Department's short term rental ordinances. So that's very much something that we're going to be looking at now and we hope that, um, the protests go our way. We'll see. Um, we're just about done with our review of all grazing properties in the county. Um, we did District Six and, uh, I believe District One out this year. And so District Six alone, I think, led to like something like a six million dollar valuation increase, just for grazing, so. It's there, it's kind of adds on to it, but we'll be looking at, probably looking at some of the other, uh, classifications like dry land, uh, in the near future, hopefully. Site visits are one of those things for us that we seem to just struggle getting ahead of. We're going to be putting Juan, my senior appraiser, on them. And usually he's the one that kind of like is my shock trooper when I need something done. And so this year, we're hoping to really knock down those because the same team that handles building permits handles site visit requests. And so by knocking down site visit requests, we hope to free up more staff for permitting. Net new is generated predominantly with, with building permits, which, which is what leads to new revenue or increased revenue. That, almost, um, so next we have a sales ratio study, right? Lot of numbers here, the most important number on the page is where it says the Taos County's median ratio is ninety two point seven oh eight. Basically, you want something between ninety percent and a hundred and ten percent to be considered pretty good. So we're in, we're in the decent range, we're a little bit on the lower end, but still within a good range. And that's really my portion of it. Um, before I turn it over to Elena, um, do I have any other questions?
One last question.
Sure.
Permits, um, I'm looking for the page that had the numbers.
Either second or third page.
Okay, I just wanted a clarification, just to make sure I was reading this accurately.
Oh, page five.
Page five, thank you. Okay, so, um, nine hundred and fifty five permits outstanding at the end of the year, so in December, uh, nine hundred and fifty five, is that accurate? I mean, is that, am I reading?
From my permit team, it is, so they closed out about four hundred and twenty six this last year. So obviously they're closing them out, but there's a substantial amount that still needs to be closed out, right? To that end, we kind of shifted gears towards maintenance once we saw what was coming. And hopefully, this year was supposed to, going to be our year where we throw everything at permits, but now we're having to look at maintenance to offset the twenty twenty six, uh, disabled veterans percentage increase. So full disclosure, permits remains an area that needs our attention, absolutely. Um, we're hoping if I decide to do this position full time, that my position, the floor position will open up and then we can start shifting staff around to, to better address permits, among other things.
Right, yeah, um, I only point this out because it's a big concern, we're leaving a lot of money on the table and it's that fair and equitable portion that, that we're not fulfilling, right? And understand everything that goes along with it, but that's a lot, yeah.
I agree a thousand percent, but we'll, we'll work on it, definitely. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Elena Romero, just to talk a little bit about our records keeping portion. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name's Elena Romero and I am the Senior Assessment Specialist for the Taos County Assessor's Office. Uh, today I will be presenting to you the records keeping portion of the twenty twenty five valuation maintenance plan. Uh, first thing to discuss would be the records keeping restructure. Um, the Assessor's Office has made significant strides in reviewing and improving our workflows and processes over the past two years. We've begun to turn our attention to the processes and applications that our records keeping department handles. From our initial review, it has become apparent that we need to shift our senior appraiser, which is me, um, I mean, Senior Assessment Specialist, towards more management level efforts, including but not limited to a review of all mobile homes, exemptions and the property card library. The shift mentioned above will only be possible if our records keeping staff is able to take on some of the responsibilities that I currently spend a significant amount of time on. Some of these duties include the processing of certifications, tax rule corrections, assisting the public with mobile home releases and processing divisions of property by lot splits, family transfers and creation of subdivisions. In other words, what I'm doing is basically the same thing that my records keeping staff is doing, along with my duties that I need to continue to do because we're short staffed with that part. Um, the records keeping department currently consists of myself, Assessment Specialist One and then Assessment Specialist Three. There's not currently an Assessment Specialist Two position available in our office. A receptionist position and an assessment records librarian, librarian also fall under the umbrella of my department. We have found the rec, the reception, receptionist position difficult to fill and limited in the scope of its duties. Previously, records keeping consisted of, um, myself and three specialists. These specialists were classified as a one, two and three. We would like to restore the staffing configuration to do away with the receptionist position while restoring our Assessment Specialist Two position. Doing so will allow the previously described duties to be assigned to future Assessment Specialist Two and facilitate the continued growth and progress of our office. We have initiated the process with human resources and if things fall into place, we hope to see the change in structure for the coming fiscal year. Uh, going on to the next page, um, that's just a breakdown of comparison of years of numbers that we have, uh, what records keeping does. Um, I did see that there was an increase in our, uh, work assignments, but that probably had a lot to do with people coming in to render their properties to us or to notify us of any corrections that needed to be changed. Um, there was a decrease in deeds from, uh, twenty twenty four as compared to the previous years, but it's probably just a fluctuation of property sales or property transfers, um, and deeds that being recorded with the county clerk's office. I mean, that's, everything else on there is pretty much self explanatory. I don't know if you have any questions? Um, if you don't have any questions at this time, then I will go ahead and chance, that Eric, our G S coordinator, come up and speak on his, on his part. Any questions? No, okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Eric Montoya, I'm the G I S coordinator for the Taos County Assessor's Office. I'll be briefing you on our various, uh, happenings specifically with my department, um, ranging from staffing, workflow changes, upcoming trainings and so on. Um, I was selected to become the G I S coordinator for the Taos County Assessor's Office, November twenty fifth of twenty twenty four. Previously, I was the rural addressing coordinator within the Taos County Planning Department and spent around six years in that position. I have been a consistent Taos County employee since my initial hiring in late two thousand and nine. Unfortunately, several months after gaining a new G S coordinator in myself, a longtime Assessor's G I S staff member retired after a twenty three year long career, Don Ryle. His departure, along with the departure of his institutional knowledge, is something which will take some time for our office to regain. We currently have two vacant positions, a technician and an analyst, which we hope to have filled by the end of this year. Now I'm going to move on to workflow changes. Beginning in March of this year, the G I S department began its transition to the latest iteration of G I S software produced by G I S software company Esri. The move to the latest software known as Arc G I S Pro was accelerated out of necessity due to the departure of former key personnel. Two members of the G I S department are currently utilizing Pro in a primary capacity, while the third member will be undertaking trainings within the next couple of months to effectively begin to use Pro as well. The move to Arc G I S Pro has also facilitated the move away from AutoCAD as the primary software used to define property location slash boundaries by the G I S department. Previously, property locations were mapped in AutoCAD and then the drafted files will be provided to select G I S personnel to update the relevant G I S layers to match the CAD drafted file. Currently, we are reflecting necessary changes and updates in the G I S file directly and have effectively deprecated AutoCAD use within our department. This deprecation of AutoCAD and move to Arc G I S Pro has also allowed multiple G I S personnel the capability to create and edit our parcel data in lieu of the previous highly compartmentalized workflow process. This will bring a level of contingency to the process of defining property location boundaries and will enable G I S personnel to maintain their workflows without being affected by the potential for staffing absences. Previously, if certain staff were unavailable and or out of the office for a period of time, the entire G I S machine would grind to a halt, so to speak. Working solely in Arc G I S Pro and having multiple staff members being equivocally versed in the war, in all workflow aspects will work well to prevent our various processes from becoming unnecessarily paused and therefore holding up other sub departments of the Taos County Assessor's Office. Also, beginning in March of this year, we have adopted a new G I S tool which was created by the New Mexico Taxation and Revenue Department. This new to us tool allows us to make use of an alternate, substantially easier method to create uniform property codes, commonly known as U P Cs, for property records as is needed. The traditional method used previously could be very time consuming as it required multiple pieces of the puzzle to fall into place successfully to generate the U P C properly. The new method requires G I S personnel to simply trace around the map boundaries of a subject property, finalize their trace, and the new U P C is generated by the tool automatically. This new method of U P C generation allows G I S personnel at all levels of experience to success, eh, to successfully generate a U P C, whereas the traditional method was limited only to the most experienced users by using AutoCAD. There any questions so far in any, any of that? All right, I'm going to move on to training. There are multiple training opportunities offered by our G I S software provider, Esri, some of which we are making efforts towards having our G I S staff attend. One example we're actively pursuing is a two day instructor led course which prepares G I S users to migrate from older G I S software to Arc G I S Pro. So while I did state earlier that we are already in a large capacity utilizing Pro, um, we do still have quite a bit of room to grow into. Um, it's very similar in a lot of ways to our previous software which we use, which is also, um, created by Esri, but it is significantly different in a number of key ways. Um, it's just really taken some getting used to and it's something that we've undertaken for the most part pretty well. I mean, we've made a lot of progress with it, but we do still have a lot to learn with it since it is essentially new to us. It has been used in the G I S field for quite some time, um, in past years, but it didn't really have the functionality that it now does, which is something that we require in order to effectively determine, um, property boundary location for assessment purposes. Um, that now being something that it is completely capable of, which is why we have transitioned to it. But as I said, we do still have a long way to go with actually becoming fully fluent in it. This course that I'm describing, it will be attended by the staff member that we currently do have, who has yet to become familiar with Arc G I S Pro and it will allow them to learn essential Arc G I S Pro terminology, concepts and how to efficiently complete tasks related to mapping, editing, analyzing and the sharing of G I S data and resources. Another course we are reviewing, attended which is to have all G I S staff attend, is specifically meant to expand foundational G I S knowledge and will introduce various techniques and general best practices. This potential future training will give our department additional experience needed to work efficiently with Arc G I S Pro and it is an instructor led three day class. This class, however, may be cost prohibitive, so its consideration will be heavily budget influenced. One thing with Esri in general, being that they are essentially the field leaders in the G I S field when it comes to software is they price accordingly. Um, these courses, they have a fairly high cost to them being instructor led. Um, it is not something that would be out of the realm of possibility for us, but it's really tied to them being the field leaders and then pricing it appropriately. The G I S department within the Taos County Assessor's Office continues to move forward in a progressive manner. The change in G I S software will ensure that Taos County remains in line with other counties at the technical level and the workflow changes will ensure that the G I S department will be able to continue to support the Taos County Assessor's Office to the best of its ability. Thank you, any questions, anything for me? Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, that concludes our presentation. I would like to thank the staff for all the hard work that they put into this plan and we would appreciate your approval of our evaluation maintenance plan.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hill.
And first of all, I'd like to thank everyone as well. It's nice to see the team out here together and, and, um, presenting. Uh, Christina, uh, because protest, you're in the early stages of protest, can we ask that, uh, when protest is, is completed and you have all those numbers, could you come forward and share with us here at the commission? So, uh, not only the commission, but obviously finance, I'm sure would find this interesting as to what we're seeing in the way of protest.
Sure, that'll work.
That would be really great.
Okay.
Um, that's all I've got, everything else has been answered, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, um, Commissioners.
Uh, with that, I would, uh, move to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call Roe?
Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero? Chairman?
Yes, thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Um, I'd like to move for a five minute break, please.
Okay, been a motion, take a five minute break. There's second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call Roe? Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero? Chair Mascherano, yes.
Yes. Thank you. We'll be back in five-ish.
We'll go back into the meeting. Seven. Okay.
Motion, so move.
There's second. There's been a motion by Commissioner Romero, second by Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Mascherano, yes.
Yes. Thank you. Moving right along to 13E, review of the Taos County Third Quarter Fiscal Year 2024, 2025 Financial Reports. Ms. Emily, thank you.
It looks like I lost my audience, and this is the most exciting part of the meeting. Anyway, so because the third quarter is so busy county-wide, the financial reporting is going to look a bit different. We have highlighted our core funds, providing key information that the commission should be aware of, so you're not inundated with hundreds and hundreds of line items. We're just giving you the vital information. So the third quarter financial review for Taos County will detail the analysis of the essential funds that are pivotal to our community's well-being and operations. These include the General Fund, Roads and Infrastructure, Community Services, Emergency Medical Services, and Public Safety. These funds are crucial in maintaining and enhancing the quality of life for our residents and the essential operations of our county. So our primary focus will be on these funds. Additionally, we have provided a summary of all non-essential supplemental funds with their accounting detail included in the third-quarter fund recap report. These funds will not be reviewed in the same depth as critical operations and payroll are not dependent on them. So we're going to start with the General Fund. So the way this is going to work, I'm going to summarize the key points. I'm going to give you the numbers, and then we're going to look at our key takeaways. And to also preface this presentation, the third quarter, we should be at 75% of our budget. So total revenues year-to-date is 16.3 million. We're at 70% of our budget. G R Ts, 1.79 million, 75% of the budget, and that's flat year-over-year. We haven't seen an increase in G R Ts. Property taxes, 11.36 million, 75% of our budget. We're up 498,000. All other revenues, 3.2 million, 55% of the budget, and we're up 632,000 year-over-year. Total expenses year-to-date, 12 million. We're at 59% of our budget, so a little bit below. Payroll, 1.95 million, 59% of the budget, slightly down year-over-year, and operational expenses at 4.15. Our transfers in are at 2 million, 77% of the budget, up significantly year-over-year, and transfers out, 5.75 million, 72% of the budget. Our revenue less expenses, this is recurring revenue only, we're at a $4.28 million surplus year-to-date, and that's actually down last year from 301,000 compared to where we are at third quarter of fiscal year '24. Our net, our net cash, cash position, we have a $13.15 million ending cash balance, which is up 610,000 year-to-date. And here are the numbers. The first three columns are our actuals for the first, second, and third quarter. Fourth column is our year-to-date. Then we have our budget, the percentage of budget where we're currently at third quarter. Again, we should be between 70, 75%. Usually, a 10 to 15% variance is acceptable. The last two columns are the third quarter fiscal year '24 and the year-over-year comparison, up or down. So if you want to take a few moments to review that, and then I'll stand for questions on the General Fund.
Any questions?
So General Fund key takeaways. Revenues are performing well overall with strong collections and property taxes and other revenues, both showing solid year-over-year growth. G R T revenues remain stable, tracking at 75% of the budget, though slightly below prior year levels. Expenses remain under budget, though operational costs have increased compared to the previous year, likely due to rising service demands and inflationary pressures. Transfers in have placed a critical role, contributing to $2 million year-to-date, helping to offset the increased transfers out and maintain fund stability. Despite a healthy year-to-date surplus, cash reserves are slightly lower than the same period last year, likely due to higher outflows or timing differences in revenue and expenditure cycles. Our next fund that we're going to look at is Public Works. Our total revenues year-to-date, 681,000, 33% of a $2.8 million budget. G R Ts at 150,000, 74% of the budget. Gasoline tax, 148,000, 76% of the budget. Motor vehicle registration, 291,000, 82% of the budget. And overall revenues, slight year-to-year decrease of 8.8,000. Total expenses year-to-date, 1.52 million. We're at 59% of the budget. Payroll, 972,000, 67% of the budget. Operational, 551,000, 49% of the budget. Transfers in, 600,000 received in the third quarter, and that's up 250,000 year-over-year. Our revenue less expenses is a deficit of 841,000 year-to-date. This is worsened by 72,000 compared to where we were at the third quarter fiscal year '24. And then our cash balances are noted under the cash, cash positions. And here are the numbers.
There's a question up here.
In regards to, can you go back to the prior one? Prior slide. It, the transfers in, is this pretty consistent? The transfers in, I think it said 250,000. Is that consistent?
We've had to increase our transfer amount to supplement the shortfall in revenues that we're not receiving.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And as you can see, our, our revenue less expenses, we're continually running at a deficit balance. And again, we've had to increase those transfers to make up for that shortfall. And you can see in the graph, the expenses represented in blue, the revenues represented in orange. Our expenses far exceed our revenues. Public Works key takeaways. Revenue performance remains weak, covering only 33% of our annual budget. Current revenue levels are insufficient to support recurring operational and payroll expenses. Expenses are well-managed with both payroll and operational costs under budget. However, the structural gap between revenue and expenses continue to pose a sustainability challenge. A $600,000 transfer in the third quarter provided temporary relief, helping to offset the operating deficit and stabilize the fund balance. However, ongoing revenue shortfalls indicate that continued transfer support will be necessary to sustain operations moving forward. Questions on Public Works? This is also an infrastructure fund. It's not as doom and gloom with our G R T 1/3. This fund, key operations and payroll are not dependent on this fund. We receive G R Ts in this fund to support infrastructure. So this is going to look a little bit different. Our total revenues year-to-date are at 2.52 million, 82% of our budget. G R Ts at 1.84 million, 75% of our budget. Our equalization tax, 671,000, 115% of our budget, and our overall revenues are up 80,000 year-over-year. Our total expenses year-to-date are 546,000, 8% of our budget. These expenses are primarily related to These expenses are primarily related to infrastructure projects, down nine hundred and sixty-four year-over-year, indicating possible plot project delays. So, we're not really using these budgets. And again, that could be attributed to many different factors. I know we have a big infrastructure projects beginning in the spring that's not being accounted for, so just wanted to kind of make a note of that. Our transfers out are six hundred thousand year-to-date, thirty-three percent of our budget, and they're up fifty thousand year-over-year. So, our revenue less expenses is at one point nine seven million surplus year-to-date, and that's up one hundred and five million compared to third quarter fiscal year twenty-four. And here are the numbers. Questions on infrastructure?
So, when we say infrastructure, what all does that include?
Our county complexes, county-owned properties, sidewalks, parking lots, building, this admin building, anything related to building and infrastructure expenses within the county.
Thank you.
GRT takeaways, one-third infrastructure. Revenue performance is strong, particularly in equalization tax. Spending is significantly under budget. Transfers out increased, but were offset by the revenue surplus. Cash reserves have grown, reflecting a strong fiscal position. Our next fund is solid waste. Total revenues year-to-date are at one point six million. We're at eighty-seven percent of the budget, so we're over-budget on our revenues. Our GRTs, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eighty percent of the budget. Landfill and recycling fees, one point one eight million, ninety-one percent of our budget, and overall revenues are up three hundred and eleven year-over-year. Our total expenses year-to-date are at one point three eight million, sixty-seven percent of the budget. Payroll, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eighty-three percent of the budget. Operational costs at four hundred and eight thousand, forty-seven percent, down eighty-four thousand year-over-year. Our net position, we have a surplus of two hundred and eighty-six thousand, and that's up one hundred and sixty-four thousand compared to the third quarter of twenty-four. And here are the numbers for solid waste.
Commissioner Beal, go ahead.
Do you know the reason why we're up? I mean, is there?
The rate increase.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
So, solid waste key takeaways. Revenue performance is strong, with both GRT and landfill recycling fees exceeding prior year levels. Expenses are under control, particularly in operational spending, which remain well below budget. Cash reserves have grown steadily, reflecting a positive financial trajectory for the program. So, solid waste is really coming along. Emergency service ambulance fund. Our total revenues year-to-date are at two point two six million, eighty-one percent of the budget. Our GRT fire excise at one point one million, eighty-three percent of the budget. Intake fees at seven hundred and two thousand, sixty-nine percent of the budget. State fire recruitment grant, four hundred and fifty, fully received in the first quarter, and overall revenue up five hundred and sixty-seven thousand year-over-year. Our total expenses are at two point two million, one hundred and seven percent of the budget, so we're over-budget in our expenses, particularly in payroll. Two million, one hundred and seventy-one percent of the budget. Operational is actually down at one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, and overall expenses up three hundred and forty-nine thousand year-over-year. Scheduled transfers will be required for the fourth quarter to supplement the fund shortfall. In our net position, we're running at a deficit of three hundred and eighty-two thousand. So, this fund, our operational expenses are down, and we had strategically planned this after fire chiefs and management had created the new staffing schedule to ensure that all parts of the county were fully staffed with, you know, the appropriate EMS services needed for a rather large county. With that, we took all of the operational expenses out of this fund and reallocated them to the fire excise fund and the fire marshal's allotment, because they allow for certain types of expenses to be expended out of those funds. So, this fund is primarily housing payroll and payroll-related expenses, and it's not stable from what we're looking at right now. I'm not taking into account the one-time grant. That's not recurring revenue. That grant money is going to go away, but our payroll expenses are going to remain. So, I think that we need to really carefully consider how we're going to approach this fund with the new budget season, because critical services are dependent on it. So, emergency service ambulance fund key takeaways. Revenues' performance is in line with budget expectations and is slightly boosted by a one-time four hundred and fifty-thousand dollar state grant. Excluding this grant, recurring revenues fall short of covering expenses. Payroll costs have substantially exceeded budget, placing sustained pressure on the department's financial position and contributing to the year-to-date deficit. Revenues have increased steadily, reflecting a positive revenue stream for their program. However, while the fund shows a positive cash balance, this is largely due to the infusion of grant funds. Excluding the grant funds, the department would be operating at a more significant deficit. The cash balance remains slightly lower than the same period last year. Questions on EMS? E nine-one dispatch. Total revenues year-to-date, one point eight million. That's seventy-three percent of the budget. County GRTs, it's one point seven two million, seventy-three percent of the budget. Investment interest, one hundred and eighteen thousand, seventy-six percent of the budget. Overall revenue down forty-one thousand compared to third quarter twenty-four. Total expenses year-to-date, one point five three million, thirty-one percent of the budget. Payroll, one point one million, sixty-six percent of the budget. Operational, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, thirteen percent of the budget. Overall expenses up two hundred and sixty-eight thousand year-over-year, but still well under budget. In our net position, we have a surplus of three hundred and three thousand. And here are the numbers for dispatch. So, dispatch takeaways. Revenue collections are steady, though slightly below prior year levels. Expenses remain significantly under budget, especially in operational spending. Cash reserves have grown, reflecting a strong financial position despite a smaller surplus compared to last year. Questions for dispatch? Our senior citizens fund. Total revenue, six hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and fifty percent of the budget, driven by state grants and federal funding. Recurring revenue sources alone are insufficient to cover ongoing operational and payroll expenses. Total expenses year-to-date, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seventy-five percent of the budget. Payroll has slightly exceeded budget by a hundred and five percent. Operational costs remain controlled at fifty-five percent of the budget. Our net position, we're running at a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar deficit year-to-date, despite strong revenue performance. Recurring expenses exceed recurring revenues, leading to a cash shortfall. So, our senior programs are continually running at a deficit balance as well. You'll see an increase in federal funding year-over-year. Those were the last remaining ARPA funds. We're not going to see that anymore. And you'll notice that our state grants are down by thirty-three thousand. That's going to be our primary source of funding, so we have to kind of plan and prepare on how we're going to address that, because I don't believe that we're going to be seeing the federal funds that we've seen in years past. Senior citizens fund key takeaways. Grant funding has temporarily boosted revenue, but the fund remains structurally imbalanced. Recurring revenues do not support recurring expenses, particularly in payroll. Without additional or sustained funding, the current spending trajectory is not financially sustainable. Cash balance is declining, underscoring the need for long-term funding solutions. Aging and long-term services grant. This is our foster grandparents and senior companions. I know Dawn and Shona spoke at length at last commission meeting about the valuable services provided by these programs, so this is why I kind of wanted to highlight where we're at financially with our senior programs, because they do provide beautiful community services for our aging population. So, our total revenue is at one hundred and eighty-six thousand, sixty-two percent of the budget. State grants, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, sixty-one percent of the budget. Federal grants, fifty-seven thousand, sixty-three percent of the budget, and overall revenue slightly down seventeen thousand compared to third quarter fiscal year twenty-four. Total expenses year-to-date, two hundred and forty thousand, sixty-five percent of the budget. Payroll, one hundred and seventeen thousand, seventy percent of the budget. Operational, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, sixty-one percent of the budget, and overall expenses up year-over-year by twenty-two thousand. Transfers in, received first quarter to offset the funding shortfall of fifty thousand. In our net position, we're running at a deficit of fifty-three thousand year-to-date. And here are the numbers. And again, notice that federal funding, the drop of one hundred and thirteen thousand. So, aging and long-term services grant key takeaways. Revenue performance is moderate, with state grants showing strong growth while federal funding has declined. Recurring revenues were not sufficient to fully cover recurring expenses and supported by a general fund transfer of fifty thousand in the first quarter. The fund continues to operate at a deficit, though the shortfall is smaller than the prior year, highlighting the need for general fund support to maintain financial stability. Our indigent fund. Our total revenues are at one point four seven million, seventy-eight percent of the budget. GRT county indigent, one point four three million, eighty-eight percent of the budget. Miscellaneous revenues, thirty-seven thousand, only fifteen percent of the budget, but up significantly year-over-year. Overall revenues, flat year-over-year, down just six hundred and nine thousand. Total expenses year-to-date, one point four eight million, forty-three percent of the budget. Payroll is at one hundred and fifty-three thousand, fifty-five percent of the budget. Operational, one point three three million, forty-two percent of the budget. Overall expenses up one hundred and eighty-four thousand year-over-year, but still well under budget. Our net position in the indigent fund is deficit year-to-date, thirteen thousand. And here are our numbers. And historically, the indigent fund has always carried a significant cash balance, so this is a little alarming. I mean, we're not running at a huge deficit, but in doing the research, since my employment here, this seems to be kind of a new thing, and maybe Brent might speak into it a little bit more, but it's just my observation. I'm not sure if we've experienced this in years past.
Yeah, in the past, we had a greater cash balance. In the past, we've had a greater cash balance, but strategically, we've known that the revenues were going to be slightly less. We've cut back on the contracts. You know, at least two, three of you have heard that we've cut back on the contracts. Mosco Midat is a good example of that. I think two of you have heard about that, is because we know that it's not the money that's going to be there to support these contracts. And then we're also saving money to kick-start the detox for that one-time allocation, that one point nine eight million that Ms. Rollson Elliott talked about. That's a portion of that will be set aside for detox to get them rolling. And then, part of this is, we go to support the state Medicaid program, so we cut out a check quarterly, probably about approximately six hundred and forty thousand each quarter that goes to the state to support Medicaid, and that goes into the three-to-one match with the state and the federal government. So, and then that eventually comes back to Holy Cross.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I lack the historical knowledge to speak more into that. And I believe we're also supporting ADC with this fund at, to some level?
Right, up to three hundred thousand of the detention healthcare contract. Up to three hundred thousand of the detention healthcare contract is supported by this fund. Staff qualify somebody for indigent that's in the detention center, so, so we go up to three hundred thousand of the healthcare contract currently. So, that might have to change going into the future as well.
Our indigent fund key takeaways. Our revenue collections are stable, with GRT performing close to budget expectations. Expenses are well below budget, though slightly higher than last year. The fund is operating at a small deficit, but maintains a strong cash position with one point nine million on hand. DWI grants. Our total revenues year-to-date are four hundred and sixteen thousand, eighty-nine percent of the budget. Our state formula distribution grant, which Johnny spoke of earlier, we're at seventy-six percent of the budget at two hundred and forty-two thousand. Local DFA grant is at one point two five million, ninety percent of the, or thousand, excuse me, ninety percent of the budget. Our juvenile adjudication, thank you, grant is at ninety-nine, nine thousand, three hundred, fully received in the first quarter. Department of Transportation funds, eighteen thousand, down four thousand year-over-year. Our intake and screening fees, twenty-one thousand, and overall revenue is at a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twelve thousand up year-over-year. Sorry, all of these numbers get to be a bit much. So, our total expenses year-to-date are at three hundred and ninety thousand. Payroll, three hundred and eight thousand. Operational, eighty-two thousand, and overall expenses down fifteen thousand year-over-year. Our transfers in are at fifty thousand year-to-date, first and third quarter. Transfers from the general fund were necessary to support cash flow and bridge delays in grant reimbursements, helping to ensure continued fund stability and uninterrupted program operations. And right now, in DWI, we're operating at a surplus year-to-date of twenty-six thousand. So, as Johnny mentioned earlier, we are seeing a significant uptick in grant funding and the distribution grant and the other grant, primary grant within the DWI program. So, that's encouraging. This grant, if I may clarify, is not falling short. We are requiring transfers in due to cash flow, not the inability to sustain this fund. Our reimbursements aren't coming in timely, so we'll have to temporarily loan the DWI fund these monies. So, we're still trying to figure out in this new budget season how we're going to address these timing issues. So, revenue performance is strong, with a significant increase in state and local grant funding. A transfer from the general fund was necessary to support cash flow and bridge the delays in grant reimbursements, helping to ensure continued fund stability and uninterrupted program operations. Expenses remain well-managed, with both payroll and operational costs under budget. The fund is operating with a modest surplus and has seen a notable improvement in cash reserves compared to last year. Questions on DWI? And last but not least, our ADC financials. Total revenue year-to-date is at one point four seven million, seventy-three percent of the budget. GRTs, correctional dedication, eighty-eight thousand. Carer prisoners, nineteen thousand, fifty-eight percent of the budget. Miscellaneous admission fees, twenty-three thousand, little over-budget there, but down year-over-year. State corrections grant, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. One-time funding received in the second quarter. One-time funding for this year, it is a three-year allocation. Total expenses are at two point nine million. We're at fifty percent of the budget. Payroll, one point seven six million, sixty-four percent of the budget. Operational, one point one seven million, thirty-seven percent of the budget, and overall expenses up one point, or a hundred and sixty-six thousand year-over-year. Transfers in at five hundred and six thousand from the general fund in the second quarter, essential to maintain operations, bridging a gap between revenue and expenses. In our net position, we're running at a deficit of one point eight four million. That's worsened by a two hundred and ninety-four thousand compared to third quarter fiscal year. year twenty-four. So that deficit is getting greater every year. And here are our numbers. Again, this is continuing to run a deficit balance, requiring funding from our GRT Infrastructure Fund and our general fund. Our GRT Infrastructure Fund does allow for support to corrections, to the jail, for operational costs. So we've been relying on the GRT fund and the general fund to supplement these shortfalls.
Commissioner Veale?
Emily, on the care of prisoners, it's down seventy-nine thousand. Does that, why would that be the case? Do you know?
You know, and again, I do not know the history behind this account well enough to speak into this, so I'm going to defer to Brent.
Care of prisoners is usually where we get back from the state of New Mexico for federal prisoners or state prisoners here on state charges. So we probably have less, less state prisoners. This is one of those things that Commissioner Muscarini is going to be hearing about on the NMC board that you used to hear about, is that the state of New Mexico doesn't give us sufficient funding for the state prisoners that are waiting to go to state DOC. So then we have to always be applying for that money. So Isanta Stevan is always on top of applying for that, but she applies for it, but doesn't mean we're going to get the money back from the state.
Got it. Thanks for the explanation.
So ADC Jail Key Takeaways. Recurring revenues are insufficient to sustain ongoing jail operations, particularly in payroll and inmate care. A five hundred and six thousand dollar transfer was necessary in the third quarter to stabilize cash flows and maintain essential services. Despite temporary relief from a state grant and transfer, the fund is operating at a significant deficit, raising concerns about long-term financial stability, sustainability, excuse me. Without structural changes or increased recurring funding, continued reliance on the general fund or the GRT Infrastructure Fund support will be necessary. So overall, you've seen that a lot of our core funds are operating at that deficit balance, and those deficits are being made up by support from our general fund. So I think going into this budgeting season, this new fiscal year, it's imperative to understand the amount of money from our general fund going to support these core funds that community services and critical services are reliant upon. So I think that we need to meet these cornerstones of our county funds when thinking about how we're going to budget next fiscal year. We're not seeing the, an increase in our GRTs. They're pretty much remaining flat. I'm hoping that the road project downtown, now that it's been finalized, we'll see an uptick in those GRT taxes. But I'm hoping that this presentation today will provide you with the tools necessary to make informed decisions for the new fiscal year, and I hope this was helpful. One more thing that I wanted to present is I know that we summarize the general fund, but I think that it's important to look at the general fund revenue detail. I provided you property taxes and GRTs, but the other revenues coming into the general fund, I think it's important to understand what's happening in our county in regards to building permits and liquor licenses. So let's go to that. I don't know how to make this work. Oh, thank you.
And slow slideshow.
Ah, here we go again. Sorry, technology hates me. I had used my Outlook to open it. Maybe it's under my Outlook. Both of them. The general fund revenue detail. Okay, so if you want to take a minute to review our detail for revenues coming into the general fund, make it a little bit bigger. So our first, second, and third quarters are the first three columns in our year-to-date, and the fourth column, the very last column is where we're at year-over-year. And I'll stand for questions whenever you're ready.
I know you guys work really hard on all this. I have to tell you that this layout is exceptional. I mean, the way you laid it out is really easy to understand, so thank you for doing that. It's really, really appreciated. Certainly, we have some concerns. We have some things to think about here for sure, but definitely wanted to point out that it's very clear and precise, so thank you.
And thank you. That was the goal, to provide you with the critical information needed and to really highlight our net position. And I haven't seen that in a whole lot of government budgets that we've reviewed. But again, I come from the private sector, and we always look at our profit versus loss. So to think of government in more of a business sense and to provide our commission with that net position, so you can see exactly where we're falling short and what that needs to be and how that needs to be addressed, I think is really critical to key decision-making moving forward. So I'm glad that it was easy to understand and that you have the information that you need.
And you also said something that I think is super key here, and that is what we heard today as well was permits. That is where the money's at. You know, those, that's our, the money that we need in order to really fund a lot of what we need to fund. Certainly, look forward to maybe a conversation with the folks that were here today. They're certainly open-minded, and it just, I know it's a hard job, what they're doing in different pieces, but that's where a lot of the new growth that isn't under yield control, that could really help us offset these losses.
Any other questions with revenue detail? Okay, so next we will go to, that's not it. Here we go. These are all other funds. So again, we didn't want to inundate the commission with lines and lines of numbers and numbers. We wanted to provide, to summarize our fund details with revenue, expenses, transfers, and ending cash balance. So the funds that we didn't cover are identified on this form here. You can review it, you know, when you're able. It is a lot of detail, but it again provides the information that we didn't go over with our, for our non-essential funds. And it's broken into categories, our special revenues, our fire funds, road and infrastructure, community services. When we get further into final budget, our goal is to provide a bit more detail on our state, federal, and private grants and our projects and where we're at in regards to those. But we did try to break them out in a clear and readable way for you today. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your time. And, you know, overall, we're managing ninety-nine million dollars that, you know, is balanced to our treasurer's report, that's a balance to our bank statements and investment statements, so we can rest assured that we know exactly where every penny is going within these funds. So that was our presentation for today. And again, if there's any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Moving right along to item fourteen, our consent agenda, A through Z and double A at the end. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the consent agenda as presented from A to A.
A, Z, and double A. Second.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Romero, second by Commissioner Veale. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Sheriff Veale?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Sheriff Muscarini?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving along to item fifteen, county managers' reports and matters. Update to county commissioner on various items affecting Taos County. Mr. Hara Mio?
Thank you, Sheriff Muscarini, ladies and gentlemen. This, the Economic Development Department, the County Economic Development Department, is supposed to, Entrepreneurial, Creative Entrepreneurs Workshop, spots available, we will pick up on Friday night. This is funding from the state of New Mexico in the creative industries. And so, entrepreneurial workshops are going on throughout the week. Something good, it did stop in on Friday and Saturday. They're pretty involved in the industry here, having one-on-one consulting service for anybody that wanted to take advantage of looking at the CPA and sign up for it for the remainder of the week. Emergency management is having two active shooter classes, May 29th, May 30th. Proceeding, what you do on those days is you have to register as that, it's from eight to five. This is a very well-together active shooter class. So if you haven't been through one, planning to stay there the whole day, but encourage the commission to attend and try to make sure all our new employees get there as well. Our, as you may recall, the commission did approve a contract with facility build to redo the sidewalks and to install heat tape in the front courtyard and replacing the damaged light bollards or pedestals out in the front. So that work is going to start up this week, and so you'll be seeing a lot of construction activity that should take us through the month of, take us through the month of September, the beginning of September. Then on public worksite, because of the weather, our contractor, GM Emotion, had to push back the start of Blueberry Hill, which will begin on May nineteenth, so a week from today. And then the work on Leo Valencia Road should also be beginning on May nineteenth. They're going to have a kickoff meeting on Wednesday with the contractor and the engineer as well. And the Taos Farmers Market begins here on Saturday, May seventeenth. One of the things that we've worked closely with is better, for them to better advertise the parking. And so I did see their advertisement for the parking, if it's, takes the back parking lots across the street behind Super Save. My understanding, the Farmers Market and Ronaldo from the town will be here today because we want to put signage up not to be parking on the curve. Those of you that would come to the Farmers Market, do you remember the traffic jam? And so basically from Super Save back, it's okay for them to park on the street. So we're seeing about getting that addressed as well. Yeah, we have, she has a map of it that she'll put up. There's also tomorrow, well, tomorrow, I was thinking today was Tuesday. On Wednesday, May fourteenth, Taos Housing Partnership, along with the county, is sponsoring the next speaker in the Affordable Housing Speaker Series, How to Make Your Work: Affordable Housing Development and Case Studies from Across Rural New Mexico with Housing New Mexico. That was formerly New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority, but that's now changed to Housing New Mexico. That speaker series will be Wednesday, May fourteenth at five thirty PM here in the commission chambers. I'd also like to see if the commission is available for a commission meeting next Tuesday, the twentieth, so it'd be Tuesday, the twentieth, and Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. And it shouldn't be as long as this one, but as you saw, we had a lot of stuff on the consent agenda. We probably still have some other mop-up stuff for the end of the fiscal year.
I'm good.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll rest on you, Vice Chair.
And we're, you know, still, as Charles indicated, work with him on receiving that Main Street grant. We're finalizing the pricing on the work on the gazebo and the ADA ramp onto the gazebo as well. So we want to do some of that work in smaller chunks and not to interfere too much with the other activities going on in the plaza. So we're going to, we're going to take it in small chunks versus something big, so that way we work on it throughout the summer.
Yeah, do you anticipate that the fiestas might happen on the plaza this year? Have you heard from the Fiesta Court?
The fiestas are going to still be at the, at the park. That's something the town of Taos wanted, was for them to be at the park, is my understanding. I stand for any questions.
Thank you for those updates.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Hara Mio? Moving along to item sixteen, commissioners' reports and matters. New business to be considered at a future commission meeting or commissioner announcements? Commissioner Veale?
Yes. I'd like to see when we can have a work-study commissioners in regards to the comprehensive plan, something that we can come together and hopefully to help us get prepared for the future meeting, which we all talked about, what we would do. the future meeting, which we all talked about, what we would do. So I'd like to see if we can have a work-study. Brent, on that one?
On what subject?
Comprehensive.
Yeah, no worries.
Yeah, but I've never set it out here, so I just wondered if that's on your radar.
Yeah, no, because you put it on my radar.
Yeah, okay. Just want to make sure then. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
The commissioners' announcements, can I go ahead?
Yes.
Okay. And so just wanted to let you commissioners know that I've been asked to attend a meeting and just wanted to give you a heads up and see if you had any thoughts in regards to it. But it is for the Resource Conservation and Development Council. If you will recall, Peter Vehill did a presentation on it. He spoke about it, wanting us to become members. Also, most recently, I think Genevieve mentioned it in a town and county meeting. And so I was asked to go to the next meeting. I'd like to be able to do that. I know it's not one of our approved meetings, but I'd like to go in and see what it's all about and come back and I'd be happy to report out and let you all know. Just what I'm understanding is just a couple of, a little bit of history here, the Resource Conservation and Development Council was instrumental in the first Farmers Market. And so that just kind of gives you an idea of they've been around and have done some good work in the past. So I'd like to go ahead and, and if it's, if there's no objections, I will attend that first meeting and see what it's all about.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've attended some of the nominating committee meetings for the Holy Cross Hospital, and there's been some discussion about naming of the building. So I'm wondering if, do we have a policy on naming? Or I guess it would be a county facility, would we even have a part? Just bringing it up that it's something that's, discussion that's happening out there.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Romero, I think it would be something we'd have to turn to the state of New Mexico on, because right now they don't allow the naming of any buildings after a person that's still alive. Because there were some issues in the past with, I know they intend to possibly name it after Senator Gonzalez, but I think we'd have to ask the state of New Mexico if that's proper, since there's tax dollars going into the building.
Do we have a policy, a county policy?
We don't have a county policy.
Anything else, commissioners? Moving right along to item 17, the Taos County Board of Commissioners may convene in closed sessions, discussing and consideration regarding pending and threatened litigation. These matters may be discussed in executive session under the Opens Meetings Act, which allows for the discussion of pending or threatened litigations. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion?
A motion by Commissioner Vehill, second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero? Vice Chair Romero? Chair Mascareñas?
Yes. We shall return.[1001.73]